Alright, everybody. Look how beautiful the building is. Brooklyn Borough Hall, everybody. Brooklyn City Hall. Let's see who tunes in. Let's see who tunes on in. Last time I came here, I had free beer. I came here for a, an arts forum. As everyone fills in, a lot of casino supporters. Given their, given their gift cards. And they got a nice checklist of everyone who's supposed to show up. Alastair Bruce, Travis Weeks, DeBailey out there in London. Welcome. This is not our normal broadcast, obviously. Yeah, we're sitting next to the lobbyists. The lobbyists are right there on the other side of the public column. Lisa UK, girl. You got the email. You're more than welcome there, Deb. Good to see you, Lee. Michael Franco, Mark. This is not your everyday stream here. Obviously, once this gets going, I'm not gonna talk. Hey, CS Demond, good to see you, Mark. Welcome. No gimbal, no nothing. Kinda crazy though, a lot of people who are here were given a gift cards and they signed up beforehand. Good to see you there, Dave. Good to see you, CM. Welcome. Obviously, once this begins, we're gonna not talk. Good to see you. Big T. I know you've been asking about this. Good to see you. Good to see you, everybody. People, welcome. It's a beautiful room, Sheila. It's a shame we have to do this in here. Good to see you. You're more than welcome for the broadcast. Sheila, if you're in Coney, tell me which street you're on. We have a lot of people who are supposedly from the neighborhood, but we have some people from Bay Ridge and the Marlboro Houses. And, um, not necessarily people from the West End like myself. But if you're new to the broadcast or are you against or for the casino, let me know in the chat. Everybody's welcome here. And if you want walking, I'm not doing that today. And we're gonna hear everyone's comments. Wasn't ready for this play. Downtown Brooklyn Sheila. Good to see you, Sheila. Brooklyn joys, you're in. Cascats, welcome. Again, we're not doing a regular broadcast today. Amazingly enough, former New York One reporter Janine Ramirez is here. And she is supposedly for the casino. Signed my name right underneath hers on the sign sheet. A little disappointed, but you know, I don't think she's in media anymore. You're against the casino, Travis? Thank you. And thank you to everyone who signed the petition online. Appreciate it. But it's such a beautiful building. We're in Brooklyn Borough Hall. This building dates back to 1867. Brooklyn joys, I appreciate that. Thank you. That's right, Deb. Well, Sheila, if you've seen the renderings, it's gonna completely destroy the landscape of Coney. I mean, would you wanna ride the Wonder Wheel staring at a 44-story tall building? You don't wanna stare at a, you wanna see the Manhattan from the top of the Wonder Wheel, right? You don't wanna stare at a 44-story building. Now, this, this meeting here, this public comment, uh, is for the de-mapping of the Bowery. And Bowery Street is that street just one over between the Boardwalk and Surf Avenue. They wanna, yeah, right? Sheila, it's crazy. If you've seen the renderings for the casino, it will completely destroy the fabric. It will plop a massive casino complex right in the middle of the amusement district. And if you ride the Wonder Wheel, you'll be staring at a building. If you want an idea of what it's like to stare at a building while riding a Ferris wheel, then go out to the American Dream Mall where two-thirds of the ride is surrounded by buildings. It's not fun. Beautiful building in here. Beautiful building. Brooklyn Borough Hall. But you don't wanna stare at a building while riding the Wonder Wheel, people, so. This is what we're here to save. They're literally gonna take over, they're literally gonna take over. The amusement district. It's kinda scary. And we could be here for as long as we possibly can, so. So, uh, if we run low on battery or anything like that, don't worry. We are all set up. No casino, period, Mr. Metalhead. That's right. Good to see ya. Good to see ya. Gabby, good to see ya. Yeah, exactly. You see what's happening in downtown Brooklyn. It's a whole new skyline here in downtown. But now it's coming to Coney. Good to see you there, Stephanie. Let's hope. Fingers crossed. This is the public comments portion of the, uh, so now we're talking to Borough President Antonio Reynoso. Good to see you, Stephanie. Everyone's coming on in. Everybody's coming on in. Well, you see people with the four signs. So it's pretty easy now. Now, the big question is, are they gonna discard their signs once the meeting finishes? If they do, I will, we will show, I will show that as well. Desert Lady, welcome. So we literally, I got to catch them, uh, I got to, I catch them, uh, I caught them giving away the gift cards before. So more and more people coming. Again, let's see if they discard their signs. Now, the big question is, why didn't Joe Sitt develop on the land in the last 10 years he has had the property? That's the big question. Actually destroyed one of the oldest buildings in Coney Island, the Grashorn, the Grashorn Building, which dated back to the 1890s. They let that building go into disrepair and then they ultimately destroyed it. Why hasn't Joe Sitt worked on these properties in the last 10 years ever since the Coney Island rezone? If it wasn't for Mayor Bloomberg, the whole amusement district would be destroyed. That's why we have Luna Park today. Good to see you, Susan. Yes, indeed, Jack. Uh, let's see here. We got some more, uh, oh, we got the lobbyists now coming in. The lobbyists have entered the room. It's a shame this debauchery has to go on here. In such a beautiful room. John Burke, welcome. So the Grashorn Building was on the corner of Surf Avenue and, and, uh, Jones Walk. So right across the alleyway from, uh, from Luna Park. The last time that building was even used in a television show or anything like that was in the TV show, uh, Bored to Death, they actually used that show. All the lobbyists are getting together. Janine Ramirez from Channel 1, used to be on Channel 1, also there. Nice to know she's paid off by the casino lobbyists as well. Not a jury room, no. We're not going into the jury. It's not, it's not a courtroom. This is a courtroom, but we're not doing jury duty here. Oh, there she is. This is the one who disrupted the Zoom. Coming on in. So no, we don't get the answer today. This is still the public comment. They did not award the casino, um, bid to the Coney yet. That's the name of the project, by the way. It's simply called The Coney. Exactly. Keep it for families. Exactly. People coming on in here. Ooh, there's Dominic Recchia. I was waiting for Dominic to come in. Hopefully, we'll get some words from Dominic Recchia after the proceedings here like we did last time. Now again, why, why didn't Joe Sitt develop on this property in the last 10 years? He could have built a whole brand-new pavilion of fun. Something that goes with the neighborhood. Not a 44-story tall casino building. But Sheila, I have to be here to document this because they're not gonna have a proper webcast of this, so. Did I bring popcorn? I will eat popcorn after the stream. But I'm here to save the integrity of the neighborhood. I'm now a resident of Coney, so. It's a shame we have to do this in a beautiful space like this here. But again, the big question is, why didn't Joe Sitt build on this property? All these years, he destroyed what Astroland was. Astroland is now the new Luna Park and Bloomberg basically saved that. Mayor Bloomberg saved that. But this all dates back to the original 2010 rezoning. Yes, indeed, Nabul. Good to see you, Margie. Welcome. Yeah, I know, it's crazy. Brooklyn joys, it's crazy. Look at Dominic. Look at Dominic working the room. Dominic Recchia is the guy in the white hat, hair there. He, uh, he got his words last time. Hopefully, he'll get his words again today. And then you got some lobbyists there as well. And more people from the casino. More casino people are coming in there. I know, Milo, it's pretty crazy, pretty disgusting how people could even consider this, uh, plan. And even the revised plan of the, of the Coney development is still kinda grotesque. Completely choking off the, the amusement district. Remember the Animal Nursery? That was right next door to the theater. Let's see what happens here. Let's see what happens. Everyone comes on in. But again, the big question is, again, we have two questions. We wanna get the words from Dominic Recchia, of course, like we did last time, but also, how many people will discard their, yes, to the casino signs? Last time, when we were in Coney Island Hospital, they discarded all of their signs. I know, we already have a gambling barn in Queens. Why do we need another one? Exactly. Make sure you hit the like button so more people can find this. The traffic survey is pretty funny. They're gonna put, they said they're gonna put traffic cops at all the major intersections. There's 44 major conflicts of traffic entering and exiting the amusement district. Good to see you there, Ambrose. Coney's still very fun, but you know, we don't wanna choke up by a casino. Yes, indeed. Todd, good to see ya. There's Dominic working the room. And again, we could be here for hours, so. We're all set up for it. So it supposedly starts at 6 o'clock. And we are, it is slated for up to three hours of public comments. And again, another question is, how many of these people are gonna stay? All the people who are paid here, how long are they gonna stay? Yes, I'm gonna film the entire meeting. From beginning to end. Yes, anyone's allowed to, this is public comments, so anybody is allowed to show about this meeting. Good to see you, RJ out there in Colorado. Welcome. A worldwide audience. Welcome, everybody. If you're new to the broadcast, tell me why you're watching. Probably give you a shout out. Fawn Marie, good to see you. Aloha. Welcome. Yeah, five generations, Sheila. And they're gonna try to destroy that with a casino. Let's see what happens. RJ, we got signs, RJ. We have, we have signs. That's all we can do. All we can do is walk around these little signs here. That's all we could do. And again, it's not a vote. This is public comments, so. You're gonna be hearing lots of people who have been bust in and paid for. I think they got a $30 gift certificate to Buffalo Wild Wings, if I'm not mistaken. Well, Dominic Recchia, he's been, Dominic's been in the game for a while. Let's see if we get his statement from him at the end of this. Good to see you, everybody, people. Obviously, this is not the normal livestream we do here. So, we'll see. Exactly, Joe. Good to see ya. Fawn Marie, go to the, uh, No Casino in Coney Island Instagram page and you could download all that stuff. It is available online. Good to see you, Cynthia. Welcome. I'm happy I dressed light. Pretty warm outside, so. Very happy I dressed light. An Easy Rider, been a member of Dutch Moms Plus for the last 30 months. Easy Rider, I wanna thank you and all the channel members for having faith in me as a content creator. And thank you so much for being one of us, one of us. Who came up with the idea for casino? Uh, blight for spite, Joe Sitt and Thor Equities. So that's what Coney needs, a new pavilion, a reimagined pavilion of fun. It's not hard. Build a big barn-like building, put rides inside like the Pavilion of Fun in Seapole Chase Park. Indoor, outdoor water park. I mean, it's kinda like a no-brainer what needs to go there. But a casino is kinda like twisted. And if you never know what the Pavilion of Fun looks like, look it up. It was in the old Seapole Chase Park. It was incredible structure. Run, run, run. I am the only livestreamer supporting, uh, supporting. Where are the other saps to go? Run, run, run. Here's the difference. Run, run, run. I'm an actual member of the community. I live in Coney Island currently, so. And plus, I'm very active in the community. I do, uh, sometimes work at the museum, so. And obviously, you know, I always talk about the history of Coney and all that stuff, so, and that's why I'm here. But yes, I am the only livestreamer who, uh, yes. I, I, I forgot who told me a couple of months back. It's like, the difference between me and a lot of the other livestreamers is that I'm a member of the community. We know everybody. I know a lot of these people who are here, so. Those people kill ya? That's the difference. But every now and then, I'm on display up at the museum, so. But you know where, you know where the real streams, you know, like yesterday. We did a really good stream yesterday. We were deep in Brooklyn yesterday. So. I like to show you the real Coney Island. And the real Brooklyn, the real New York City. You know, there's a lot more to see other than the mermaid parade and the hot dog eating contest. All the lobbyists hanging out in the back now. Wait, there's Dominic. Let's see if he can get a couple of words from Dominic Recchia. Let's see if he's working the room. Let's see if Dominic's working the room here. Dominic Recchia, pushing there, talking, talking to his fellow casino proponents. Are you talking about the Brooklyn Cyclones? Of course. They play at Mammondees Park. I'm hoping to livestream a game one of these days. I'm hoping to livestream a Brooklyn Cyclones game. They're a lot of fun and I highly recommend going. Yeah, Nabul, you gonna fall asleep again? It's late for you out there in France. Ooh, Antonio Reynoso. So they wanna place a casino in the, literally in the middle of the amusement district. Now, Its Sugar is, is one of the plots of land. Its Sugar is one of the plots of land that'll be part of the casino. Coney Island Art Walls and of course, the lot that used to have the Grashorn Building.
Now this is officially on the record, okay? So, good evening. Good evening. So happy to see you all here. Welcome to your house, Brooklyn Borough Hall. I am Antonio, the president of the greatest borough in the city of New York, which is Brooklyn first and foremost. That's the record. There's consensus. The president was, is the greatest borough in the city of New York. I wanna say, first I wanna say thank you all for being here. The fact that you guys took time to show up for this important issue really reflects how important it is to you. And I wanna speak to what we can accomplish here today and what I think can actually work. I want you to think about the conviction you have and how important this issue is to you. Individually. I don't even want you to think about everybody else, yet. But think about how important it is to you. And how much conviction you have over this issue and what you believe and how deep it is in your soul and your heart about what it is that you want, right? I want you to think about that. And I want you to know that there's another person in this room that has a completely different opinion from you that has that exact same conviction and have that deepness in how they feel. And I think that's important to know because I think that the things that won't be reflected on the record when we submit our recommendation to the Department of City Planning is any of the noise that is made, any of the jeers and cheers that are made, any of the squabbling, the screaming, all that stuff, none of it is gonna be reflected on the record, not one of it. It's reflected with me. I see this. Remember I hosted a meeting in Coney Island and I brought this too? We made public every single thing that we got from that, even the people that cursed. We wrote the curse words in the report. So that you guys know that we're not holding back on what we wanna see. We are, we are doing our best under this process to try to make sure you feel heard. But I think there's value in being able to listen to people without thinking that they don't have the same conviction you have, even if you disagree. We're in a time right now where what people want us to do is people with little to fight against people with less. That's what they want us to do all the time. They want us to focus on killing each other so that we don't pay attention to what's happening in our town. But I want us to try our best here, even if you disagree with something. Whatever they said is going to be on the record, whatever you say is going to be on the record. And in both of them, there's gonna be like an equal, there's not gonna say this person was angrier than this person. Or this person was more emotional than this person. Or this person is right and this person is wrong. None of that will be there. The only thing that you will see is your comments. So let's respect each other's comments and let that, let's let them go on the record. The faster we do that, the faster you get them out, the comments out, and the faster we get to go home. Which is, I think, something we all wanna do for Wash Manuela's. But I also wanna say this. This process is terrible. Every single part of this process is terrible. The city, the state of New York has put us in a position where we're trying to make lemonade out of batteries. And we just can't. We're in a position where even after today, we're going to be presenting something to the applicant. And there is no way that the applicant can do what we ask in the timeline that we have to submit a recommendation to DCP. Not in a reasonable way, cuz we have to submit to DCP by Thursday. Thursday. If there was a process that truly respected the voices that we're about to hear today and the opinions that I have as Borough President, it would be much longer than allowing for my land use team, three days, to be able to get something to them and get something in return. That puts us in a bad position. The applicant is not in a good position. They are not. Because they have to convince everyone in Coney Island and new this city that their application is the best application with short timelines, with no community-based process, with no systems that truly give a real opportunity for input to come into them. They can't get that. Best case scenario, they can't get that. And then the community, the community doesn't feel hurt. The community is trying to compensate for the terrible process by making more noise. By shouting, by making sure you hear them. At least they can use their vocal cords if you're gonna give them a private process. I know that. I know that this process is terrible. I did not choose it. And now, at this moment, at this moment, the process forcing me to act by law. It's asking me to do something. Mind you, that open hearings like this don't happen everywhere. This is very unique to Brooklyn. In other places, the Borough Presidents just move through the process without a public hearing, not here. I wanna make sure that people see you. I want the applicants to get as much information as they can whether or not this is gonna happen. We need to make sure that they hear you and they respect you. We have people with opposite opinions that do care about jobs, that do care about other things. We wanna hear them too. But I want us to do our best. It's gonna be hard cuz we care so much. It's gonna be hard. But again, your comments will not, the frustration or the emotion that you have will not be expressed on your comments. That's what I wanted to say. Second thing is, I think is important. Try your best to speak to the merits of the issue at hand today, which is the de-mapping. That's very important cuz technically, technically, we have to give back comments on a de-mapping. So let's say you want jobs. I want jobs. How is that reflected on the de-mapping? If it's not, it's gonna make me so that you're making a comment that doesn't have any technical, any technical value to the de-mapping. So when you think about de-mapping, this public space is being taken away, for example. Speak to that. Try to keep to the, to the subject at hand on a technical level. Try your best. That's very important cuz then we get to make the argument based on the information and data that we're getting from the community related to the de-mapping. That is very important. So try your best if you have those comments to present. The next thing is, we're not making any decisions here. Also, the CAC is what they're called. The committee is called the CAC. I will be in the CAC. I'm not gonna put anybody, I'm not gonna try to hide and say, hey, let me put this person in and if they say yes, like, oh, I don't know. If they say no, oh, I don't know. I know exactly what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna be the representative. I'm not gonna put that pressure on anybody. I'm gonna take all that pressure. I want all the smoke, alright? Cuz I want to be held accountable for whatever decisions I make, always. I wanna expect all my political capital to do what I think is best for this borough, and I'm not gonna hide, okay? No decision has been made, but I really need to get your comments on this. The next thing is I have, because this process is set forth by the state, there's another meeting that I do have. So I want to present myself here. I was gonna do a video and I thought it was not a good thing to do. I want to thank you guys to see my face and hear my voice. My team is very prepared. They have a lot of questions, a lot of questions for the applicant. And you will hear those questions that we are going to be asking, how serious we're taking this. They will not be leaving in five minutes. They will be having to answer questions. And the ones that they can answer need to get answered within a two or three day span. And they have to get that to us. And they know that, okay? So I'm just doing that to do the best I can at table seven, okay? Try your best to listen to each other, even if you disagree. Your emotions will not be recorded, unfortunately. Um, make sure, try your best to keep it to de-mapping and understanding that if the best you can, you don't need to do that, but try your best. And then, the last thing is that the applicants will have to answer every single question that we have here from us. Unfortunately, once they're done, not unfortunately, you guys can speak, but unfortunately, they can't answer your question, but they get, they answer my question. But they can still sit here, which they will. I expect them to stay until every last comment is made. They will be listening to you, listening to you, hearing you. And we're gonna find out if they're listening to you later. But I wanna thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak to you here today. I wanna thank you all for being here today. I hear you. I know how controversial this is, but I want to try your best. If anybody knows me here, I truly come from a piece of love. I love you all. No matter how angry you are, or how happy you are, it's love across the board. I do love you. You guys are gonna do great today. Thank you so much, and don't forget to spread that. Thank you so much. This is, say hi to, this is Erin. Everyone, I want everybody to say hi to Erin. Erin is not me. Erin is a person that is hired to do this work in this office. She is a public servant, and she's gonna try the best she can here, and I want you to do the best you can to treat her as much respect as possible, okay? They're gonna be answering questions. You're gonna hear them. You're gonna know what's up, okay? Alright? We got Tal as well. Say hi to Tal. Also, they're gonna do, they're gonna do great by you guys, okay? We're here for you. Okay, we're here for you. So thank you so much, and take it away. Thank you, Erin. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Good evening. As the borough president said, I'm Erin Wright, Deputy Chief of Staff of Policy for the Borough President.
And I am Tal Litwin, pinning policy analyst for the Borough President Antonio Reyno.
This uniformed land use review procedure public hearing is being conducted from the Brooklyn Borough Hall courtroom on Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty-five. Please note that this hearing is being streamed via Webex and reported to comply with the open hearings law. This video will later be posted on the Brooklyn Borough President's YouTube channel. We have one item on the agenda this evening. Following the applicant's presentation and many questions from the chair, members of the public who are in attendance tonight will be invited to testify on the application. All comments will be limited to two minutes. While this meeting is being livestreamed, we do not accept virtual testimony, but members of the public may also submit comments to testimony at BrooklynEP.NYC.gov for the Borough President's consideration until five P M. on Friday, March fourteenth. Please call this item.
Founder, item one, the Coney Development. U L number C two five zero one zero eight M M K. A private application by T S G Coney Island Entertainment Holdco LLC for de-mapping actions along portions of Bowery, Stillwell Avenue, and West Fols Street. Approval of the requested action would facilitate the development of a one point three million square foot multi-use development that includes a gaming facility, convention center, hotel, event space, structured parking, a new rooftop open space, and other amenities in Coney Island Community District thirteen. On January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, Community Board Thirteen issued an unfavorable recommendation for this application. Please state your name and present this application.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay? Thank you all. My name is Jody Stein, Land Use Counsel for the Coney, and I'm here to present our application before you today. So our application, uh, before you today, the project team includes Global Gaming, Thora Equities, Saratoga Casino and Hotel, as well as consultants including Legends, Sam Schwartz, FX Collaborative, and Shepherd Home. So the application, which the Borough President talked about today, which is why we're here, is a city map amendment. It has two parts. The first part is a de-mapping, and the second part is a grade change along Stillwell Avenue. So first, just to get our bearings, let's talk about the site location. In the larger map, you'll see that to the west is West Seventeenth Street. That's to the left. My Monmouth East Park is there. To the right is the Aquarium and West Eighth Street. At the top of the, the map, you'll see the subway. And then right below it, you can see in red outlined is the project area. To the south is the beach and the boardwalk. And then to, all, all surrounding it is outlined in green and blue, which includes park area and area that is under the jurisdiction of E D C. Those areas outlined in yellow, which you know well, are landmarks and attractions, including things like the Cyclone and the Aquarium, My Monmouth East Park, um, and other amusements in the area. Okay, now that we're situated, we can focus in on the actual site then. There we go. Okay. So as I said, there's two parts to this application. The first is the de-mapping. And so you'll see Surf Avenue to the north at the top of the screen, Wonder Wheel Way at the bottom of the screen, West Fifteenth to the left, and then West Twelfth to the right. So along Bowery, which is in the center, between Stillwell Avenue and West Twelfth Street, we're proposing to de-map that portion of Bowery, which is also owned by the applicant. And that's in blue. In yellow, along Stillwell Avenue and West Twelfth Street are segments that are volumes of air that we're also seeking to own above the street. So let's get in to see what this facilitates. So the de-mapping of those areas facilitates this proposed project here. And as you can see, it fronts on the amusement area and Wonder Wheel Way. And I wanna point out some of the areas that specifically, which we looked at in yellow before, the de-mapping volumes. Um, they facilitate the Stillwell Bridge, which is on the left-hand side, and then the West Twelfth Bridge, which is on the right-hand side of the proposed project. Um, I want to take a moment to just point out within the proposed project, and we'll get into this a little bit more, but there's an escalator. It's outlined in yellow. It looks like a, a V or an arrow right in the center of the screen at the bottom, towards the bottom. And this leads up to the open rooftop area, which is over an acre of green space that can be accessed by, accessed by the public uh, without entering into the gaming facility at all. It can be accessed right from Stillwell Avenue. There's both elevators and escalators that go right up to the green space, and anyone can visit it. Okay, the second part of this application is the site grading plan. So we are proposing to raise the grade on Stillwell Avenue for purposes of flood mitigation. So if you can see at the top of the screen is Surf Avenue, currently is at an elevation of four point seven six. We're proposing that at its intersection with Stillwell Avenue, raising it to five feet. And then when you go down towards Wonder Wheel Way, right in the middle, at the intersection of Stillwell and Bowery, we're proposing to raise this a foot to nine feet above, um, nine foot elevation. And then right under where the Stillwell Bridge would be, we're proposing to raise it another two feet to ten point six elevation. And then back down when you get to the intersection with Wonder Wheel Way to nine point six to meet the current rate. Another part of this application, which is not this application before the Borough President today, but it is in the larger scope of this process, is the state process with the gaming facilities location board, and I wanna take a moment to talk about it just so that we're all clear on how the process will, will run as far as we know. So what we know is a mix of information from the requests for applications, as well as from round one and round two answers to questions as part of the application. So the initial applications are due on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. After that, as the Borough President stated, individual community advisory committees, or CACs, will be formed for each specific application right after the submission of the applications. Each CAC will be made up of six representatives appointed, one by the governor, one by the mayor, one by the local state senator, one by the local state assembly person, one by the Borough President, and then another from the local council member for that particular application. All CACs must vote on their application by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. If an application is then approved by a two-thirds majority of the CAC, the application gets to move on. And they'll return, uh, sorry, they'll submit a supplemental application to the board by the supplemental return date, which is unknown at the time. It's T P D. But it has to be at a time after September thirtieth, but before December first, when the board will make its decision and, and give that decision to the New York State Gaming Commission, who will issue licenses by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. That's what we know so far. And now I'm going to, um, ask Sarah Davis from FX Collaborative, the architect, to come up and um, go through what this, this application, this de-mapping application, creating application facilities, which is our project.
So on the screen, what you can see is the existing entertainment district. And what would be helpful to understand are a couple of the recent de-mapping, um, areas that have been, um, occurred from the city. So you'll see the areas that are highlighted in red have recently been de-mapped by the city to allow for pedestrianization from Wonder Wheel all the way out to the boardwalk and the beach. Um, the other area to point out is the highlights, uh, kind of across it on Wonder Wheel. And on Wonder Wheel Way, it has been closed in particular traffic as well. So in the existing condition, you can see some of the de-mapping actions that have occurred on the site. So to understand what the de-mapping actions are that are proposed, these are the highlights. You can see the areas that are in yellow. These are the areas that are proposed for de-mapping volumes. Again, these are not de-mapping the streets along Stillwell or West Twelfth. It's only de-mapping the volumes above them. The key reason for that that you'll see later on is to really allow for vehicular circulation to be separated from this, the pedestrian circulation along Stillwell. We really wanna encourage and expand the pedestrianization from the boardwalk all the way to Surf to kind of maintain the intent of the, uh, de-mapping exercises that have been implemented. The other area is in blue along Bowery that we are proposing de-mapping of the street. So this gives you a glimpse of the proposed project. In the proposed project, you'll see the magenta areas that are really connecting the boardwalk with Stillwell going again from the beach all the way to Surf as a pedestrian access point. The building itself and the program start at the street level. The street level is really activated by food and beverage programming on all frontages. These are areas that are open and family-friendly. So along Surf Avenue, continuing down Stillwell and into the building itself, allowing for that year-round presence that can be activated along the exterior and the interior. Once you get into the building, we're also providing parking at the second, third, and fourth floor, and then up at the top of the podium or the base of the building is where the gaming facility is. The gaming facility is really at the central building and the building towards the west of the left on the screen. On the right in the yellow is where the convention spaces being proposed, and the convention you know is open for a lot of different uses and programs to support the community. At the top of the center building and the west building, you can see again the green space. It's the open roof amenity that is accessible for anyone. At the center of the south, at, at the center of the building as well, at the top of the building, is a very large venue, multipurpose, that can be supported with convention spaces, entertainments, support. It can open up into the open roof space as well. And then lastly is a hotel program that's above the convention space. All these programs work interchangeably with one another very nicely. Taking a little closer look at the open roof space, you can see on this slide, it has a lot of different venue opportunities, right? Between open space, smaller spaces, just an opportunity to access, um, visibility for the beach, the city, and all the areas surrounding the district. Access again provided from Stillwell. You can take this yellow tube that Jody was mentioning. Uh, it is completely independent of the gaming facility. It's open to all, um, to anyone that would like to access the space through escalators and elevators to get to the top. Another key component again that we are considering is along Stillwell, we're really focusing on allowing for that pedestrian access again from Surf. You can see this is where your, um, your access from the training platform occurs. And we're maintaining both pedestrian access as well as visual access. You can see the human gateway. You can see the beach from the platform. And then of course, at the street presence as well, that from Surf, you can see the presence of pedestrian friendly activation on Stillwell all the way from Surf to the boardwalk. And as the visual continuity, but you can see above where we're allowing for traffic to pass over, so we don't have that interchange that has a conflict between vehicles and pedestrians at, um, at that intersection.
Great, thank you, Sarah. So we're gonna take a look at the vehicular circulation together around this area. And we'll start with West Fols Street. So first I wanna mention that on West Fols Street, um, on the right side or east, we have taken, uh, we've added a lane of street space from the applicant's property. So it's taken private property and added a lane so that there's four lanes coming into and out of West Fols Street, um, from Surf Avenue. So cars will enter on West Fols Street, uh, for, for this project. They'll come in through this circular driveway. And there's a drop off over there for valet. Or they'll go up to the South Park. They'll enter the parking garage and, and head up to the South Park area. Now, when they leave, there'll be a space internal in the buildings where they will either go pick up their car from valet, or they'll go back to their car at South Park. And they will traverse over the Stillwell Bridge so that there's no conflict between the pedestrians on Stillwell Walk and the cars that will be up above in the airspace. And then head out of the facility through Bowery on the left-hand side, and they will exit on West Fifteenth Street. While we're on West Fifteenth Street, West Fifteenth Street is also where buses will enter. And there will be a bus lobby south of Bowery for buses, for bus drop off and pickup. Buses can turn around and they can exit on West Fifteenth Street as well. And they can park along the side if there's a short waiting period as well. Um, I wanna talk about emergency vehicles for a moment uh, because I know that sometimes emergency vehicles have a hard time getting over here. So pedestrianizing Stillwell Avenue allows for emergency vehicles to easily access, um, the, the product area. So they'll be allowed throughout the site, but as well, they'll be allowed to go down Stillwell Avenue, as well as Jones Walk, which is a de-mapped street, but it acts as an alley right now, which is all the way on the right-hand side of the property. There is loading areas on West Fifteenth Street and on West Fols Street, south of the internal drop off, as well as Bowery, as well as Bowery, where they can come in, loading can happen, and they can leave and exit through those same streets. Tenants can access their properties if they operate south of Wonder Wheel Way by just entering on West 12th or West Fifteenth Street. They have that option and they can access their site. So some of the transit improvements that we are really excited about, one of which is the ferry. We believe this would be a great addition to the Pony Island area, a ferry at Steeplechase Pier. We've already begun advocating for ferry service here with local elected officials. A ferry service used to operate here, we believe it could operate here again, and we will continue to advocate for a ferry in this area. It would be a great way for people to access the site without using cars. In addition, for public transportation, we're advocating for express subway service. There used to be an express line over here and we believe that it can operate again as long as there's a travel demand, and we believe that there will be the travel demand in this area for this proposed project. We also keep providing shuttle service from public transportation hubs such as downtown Brooklyn right here, as downtown Manhattan, Midtown, airports, Flushing Plains, commercial areas, and that would help to reduce vehicular traffic. And we will be providing employees with incentives to use public transportation, including local hiring. But from wherever employees are coming from, we will be incentivizing them to use and utilize public transportation. For off-site improvements, we'll be providing signage from the Belt Parkway and other local intersections in order to disperse traffic so that not everyone is traveling through the same streets for the project. We'll be changing signal climbing and activations and creating new turning lanes and we'll be providing pedestrian public safety improvements. On the actual property, as I mentioned before, we're adding a lane of traffic on West 12th Street from the applicant's property. We are providing traffic, traffic attendants to assist on West 12th Street and Surf Avenue to help traffic flow and get cars into the site quickly and out of the site quickly. And we'll be providing, Sarah spoke about this, a hundred-foot wide public pedestrian thoroughfare on Stillwell, which will connect the subway and Surf Avenue all the way to the boardwalk and the beach. And I also want to mention that the skybridge, which is facilitated by this de-mapping, will help that Stillwell Walk, that hundred-foot wide public pedestrian area, to be free of cars so that the cars can travel over the street and not cause any intersection issues between pedestrians and vehicles. So we're really excited. Pony Island is the people's playground. We want to create a year-round compelling entertainment destination for everybody. We want to generate a community catalyst for economic development for Pony Island. We want to provide a permanent year-round career opportunities. And we want to establish a model of resiliency and sustainability as well as launch a multi-level transportation plan. And to facilitate this, we're really excited about our $200 million community trust fund. The trust will include a board of directors comprised of local community leaders and stakeholders to guide funding for decisions for local benefits such as community grants, boardwalk improvements, neighborhood safety and security, creation of new open spaces or to improve existing open spaces, workforce development, resiliency and environmental protection, as well as other. And those are just some of the things that the fund can be used for. For education and community programs, we're partnering with high schools and colleges and culinary institutions to provide training programs and internships and scholarships as well as pipelines to opportunities for careers. And in doing so, we're creating jobs, right? For the construction of this project, we're creating 4,500 union construction jobs. Four thousand permanent gaming and hospitality union jobs that have an average salary of $75,000 a year. We have a local hiring preference, which includes with a strategy that includes job fairs at NYCHA houses so that we can hire direct from the community. We have public safety enhancements, which include onsite spaces for NYPD, FDMI, and EMS facilities for both their operation and their vehicles. We have increased lighting and surveillance for the neighborhood surrounding the public products, surrounding product assuming. And then other improvements include the flood resiliency by raising the grade at Stillwell Avenue as well as the acre of rooftop open space for public use will be accessible from street level as Sarah described, and beautified pedestrianized Stillwell Walk, which will lead right to the beach and to the boardwalk. Additionally, we'll have convention space for community events, which would be a great addition for much-needed space in the area. So I think one thing we can all agree on is that there is no better place than Pony Island. And it's our hope that the Pony is part of its future. So I thank you and I look forward to taking questions. Excuse me, everyone. Thank you so much. I ask that you represent. Thank you so much. We have quite a few questions for the applicant team. So we need to move on through the questions so that we can start hearing from all of you. So I appreciate you pulling your comments until it is your turn to testify. So we're going to start asking them and then we'll start calling names for testimony shortly. Can the applicant still build a casino at this site independently from a successful de-mapping application?
So yes, the applicant owns the four parcels of land.
Can you please hold your comments? We're not able to hear the responses from the applicant. Thank you so much. Thank you. So yes, is the answer, the applicant owns the four parcels that you saw today and could build a new facility without the de-mapping and the change in grade on Stillwell. However, without that, the buildings would have to be taller to accommodate each program in the building. And there would be a reduction in the ground floor, street-facing retail space, and food and beverage space. The public benefits such as the one acre of rooftop open space over the project area would not be able to be accommodated. The proposed vehicular circulation path would have to cross over Stillwell Avenue, causing a conflict with pedestrians and not allowing for Stillwell Walk to be pedestrianized, which Stillwell Walk today is proposed to have green space, programming, and amenities such as seating. And you would not be allowed to raise the grade for flood mitigation purposes. So those things would not be able to be accommodated. And have you gone through any of those design alternatives, like massing those out? And would be able to share with us over email? Yes, I mean, we have spent the last three years working on this and we've gone through many design iterations shaped by valuable feedback from both the city agencies that we've met with as well as community stakeholders. I think we can share what we have. The input though that we've gotten over the last three years is really refined our proposal. And I don't know if you recall, but when we first went through the scoping, the draft scoping for this project, we were proposing on de-mapping all of the streets surrounding the proposed project. We really scaled that back based on feedback that we received from the community and from the city. And we're really doing what's only absolutely necessary to support the current project and the public benefits that support that project. Can you explain why the applicant believes this process is required prior to any review by the CAC? Yeah, so the CAC requires, you know, a project, right? And then right after the CAC process, which ends on September thirtieth, we have to submit that final application, which is called the supplemental application, by December first. So there's some date in there when our supplemental application is going to be due from September thirtieth to December first. And there's just not enough time to go through, it would have been three months or less. So to clarify, you're saying that you would not be able to speak a land use exception after being awarded the gaming license by the CAC? After being awarded gaming license, no. And that's in, the answer is in the second round of questions. It states that land use approvals must be completed by the supplemental return date, which again is TDP, but has to be after September thirtieth and before September first. And certainly before the award of license. And would the applicant be open to submitting an amended de-mapping application if requested by the CAC? I don't, we don't believe that the state's timeline would allow for such a thing and that the CAC would know that. And any amendment is just a new rule. There's not a shorter process. On parking, the proposal identifies fifteen hundred spaces will be built, but there will still be a need for nearly a thousand additional spaces to meet potential demand during peak periods. How do you intend to meet your off-site parking demand needs?
Good evening. My name is Kova. It's a seminar meeting on any of the mountain people in some of the projects. So the parking shortfall occurred of all the peak periods during the Saturday overnight peak period and mountain the other peak periods, I don't know. Nonetheless, the parking demand was calculated with this non-controversial factors, like the stress test. And this, we started with looking at estimates from the casino consultant for the project. And then as we went through the process, the inputs from the lead agency, City Italian and UOP, there were other more controversial factors that were considered. For example, these combos from the Rose Hill and Queens, which is not close to subway, there's nothing on subway access that this company does. We're here at a stress test and that's what the parking demand is based on. With that, there is a shortfall of all the peak periods to mention, some of the Saturday overnight period and other weeks, the fifteen hundred spaces that were deployed as part of the project in combination with on-street parking that is available in the end, that would give parking stability down. There is sufficient capacity to accommodate the parking demand generated by the project. Which also brings us to, again, this, the parking demand consideration analysis did not factor any subway improvements, any transit improvements, any incentives to employees or listeners to use transit, none of that. It was based on transit that exists today and on assumptions on how people would arrive at this site without any other intervention or incentives. We had outlined a whole host of travel demand management measures that are pretty much standard for a project that is named. And this project, again, the technical analysis did not consider any of that. So the actual number, the demand is the real number. If those are in place, but again, this is a stress test, we looked at the worst case scenario.
Thank you. Structured parking is extremely costly to develop. Has the applicant considered including less structured parking in order to increase the investment in public amenities or open spaces? So, sorry, can you repeat the question? Yeah, that structured parking is very costly to develop. And has the applicant considered including less parking in order to increase the investment in public amenities or open spaces? Yes, it is costly to develop. Would love to probably provide less, but to meet the EIS and the analysis that was done, we were left with, you know, needing to provide this amount of parking. As Kova talked about, you know, no TDM measures were allowed to be taken into account. So this is the most conservative analysis. But if transportation demand measures were able to be taken into account, we do believe that they would significantly decrease our parking demands. Less parking, providing less parking would essentially lower the podium of pretty much the entirety of the project. Can you discuss the public benefits made possible through the de-mapping of the streets relative to the proposals? We spoke about some of them, but I think specifically first, would like to ask about the programmatic need to connect the sites where they use their skybridges. Sure. So I think that the programmatic need to connect the site through skybridges, it just provides so many public benefits at this point, including a one acre open space on the rooftop of the site. Sorry, I'm not able to hear the applicant respond to the questions. Thank you so much. So the public benefits will include the one acre green space on the rooftop of the project, which would not otherwise be capable of designing without the skybridges, as well as this overpass on Stillwell, in the Stillwell Bridge for cars to drive through so that Stillwell Walk could be a pedestrian throughway. And with Stillwell Walk being a pedestrian throughway, we're going to make it green. We're going to provide amenities space. There's going to be seating and it will be a great entryway into, you know, from Surf down to the boardwalk and the beach. And because of that, we're able to raise Stillwell and provide flood mitigation and make our building, which is above flood mitigation at DFB thirteen, it'll be able to meet that, which is amazing. And what was the second part of your question? I think that's fine. I think there was a few, a few clarifying questions to that. So in terms of the volume of those connections, is a ninety-six foot and one hundred and sixty foot volume required for the function of the casino? Yes, so the ninety-six foot volume includes the driveway from parking to go over Stillwell Walk. So I think it is very much necessary there. For as far as the other volume over West 12th Street, it's a little bit more complicated. And that's because the volume on West 12th Street is, it leads to the core of the project. So when you go through the drop-off, you go down West 12th and you go through the drop-off, you enter into the building, and if you want to go to the convention center, if you want to go to the hotel, you're going to go through West 12th Street. So it includes a lot of those problematic areas and it was more complex. And it was more complex just to get people from the drop-off into that area to create, you know, cohesive flowing product.
Couple more questions on that.
Yeah.
What considerations have been made in response to community concerns about using a relationship to the water in the neighborhood?
So this has been a big discussion with community stakeholders and city agencies over the last three years that we've been working on this. And we've made many changes in response to these discussions with regard to this amusement district and the water plant. One of the things I think that's very clear is that Coney has a deep history and we want to respect that. We want to honor that. At the same time, as we respect that, we know that in order to have equity development on a year-round basis, we need to bring new development into the entertainment district. Otherwise, you don't have a year-round entertainment district. And so in keeping with the history of Coney, the sky bridges actually pay homage to the historic gateways and arches that existed in the same location 100 years ago. The bridges preserve the view corridors and they enhance the pedestrian experience from Surf to the water, just like they did 100 years ago.
We're not able to hear the responses.
When Coney Island was home to over a million visitors annually. So one of the options we're exploring that would continue the view corridors through the actual sky bridges from the Ford Walk and Beach to Surf Avenue would be to use materials in the sky bridges that mirror the current conditions as they exist at that time. So for example, if you're looking at the sky bridge and it's the middle of the day and it's a beautiful blue day, you would see that beautiful blue sky day with maybe some shadow of the ocean behind it. And it would be clear on the sand. That's one of the things that we're exploring.
And would you be available to modify the lower limiting plane?
I'm so sorry, I can't hear you.
Would you be available to modify the lower limiting plane of the volumes? Excuse me, I'm not able to hear the applicant's response. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, we have raised the lower limiting planes in response to community and, and city discussions over the last few years. And we, in order to raise it more, you'd really be raising the podium heights of the actual buildings because the heights connect to the building. And so to go up anymore would actually raise the height of the, the podiums of the building.
A few more questions to get through. The DEIS identifies around five hours of incremental shadow on a nearby little playground. And has the applicant considered investing in improvements for this park?
Yes, there is, there is an increment on, on, on the playground.
Can you speak a little closer to the line?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, there is an increment on sha- of shadows on the playground. City planning and parks, you'll be with it as part of the EIS analysis. They determined that the increment would not constitute a significant adverse shadows impact. But you're correct, there is an increment nonetheless, even though it did not mean significantly. And the answer to your question is that, yes, it can be addressed through the Coney Island press phone that the deviant space.
That would actually be something that very much we value and we support, something like that.
The title proposed on Bowery appears to be constricting. Can you provide additional detail on the anticipated program at ground level?
So at Bowery, can you just tell me where, or if you want me to just open the page? You go through the ground level area.
I think it's, it's going to the, you will be where it's in there.
Where we're demapping, we're proposing to demapping. Can I, should we have a couple extra slides? I think this might be helpful. So. This would be the drop-off area, that's what you're talking about. Everywhere else would be, would be lined with retail and food and beverage. So you're either talking about an entrance to the facility or local vendor, food and beverage, or retail, existing vendors coming back, or new retail and, and beverage.
Thank you. And have you evaluated an alternative where Bowery remains as a shared street or covered arcade?
So I, I think what you saw, even in that scenario where it was a covered arcade, it would still be required to be, I mean, it does look like a covered arcade actually. And would still be required to be, uh, to map, to handle over a map street. But that's essentially how it operates.
And on public spaces, how will the public and semi-private spaces be delineated? And will the applicant team be implementing additional policing or monitoring of these spaces? What assurances can be made that the proposed spaces will be accessible to the public as opposed to just casino patrons?
I'm just going to ask Sarah to come up.
Of course, to answer your question about delineating the public and private spaces, many of the spaces are public throughout the facility, certainly at Streetwell and the food and beverage, as well as the retail offerings. Those along Surf, along Stillwell, along 15th and 12th Street have entrance opportunities to access all of those program spaces. So there are a lot of public spaces at the street level. Once you enter the yellow tube that we saw, for instance, that's also public, that gets you up from Stillwell, since it's currently designed, up to a midpoint within the podium that offers food and beverage, open for family use and is completely independent of the gaming facility and probably up to the rooftop, which is also open. So those are kind of delineated to make sure that they're clear and open for public access. Other examples, for instance, the hotel, who are, are, you know, a guest at the hotel or you're a guest at the convention, for instance, and someone can rent the space for the convention. Those are also open opportunities for community use or guest use that are independent of the gaming facility. Similarly, if there's a very large entertainment venue at the top, could be very appropriate for a concert venue, other, or convention spaces that would be appropriate for use by those that may be visiting those types of venues. And then of course, for making sure that they're being monitored for all of those new spaces. Because here, second person that we want absolutely to be in support of introducing new checkpoints and security to make sure that there is a clear delineation between the gaming facility and those open spaces for public use as well as for hotel and convention uses.
Thank you. And here are the rooftop open spaces. There appear to be a number of concessions, attractions and amusement uses.
I'm so sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry. Can you please hold your, your comments? For the rooftop open spaces, there appear to be a number of concessions, attractions and amusement uses included. Can you provide an estimate of how much money you would anticipate generating from these uses that would only be made available through a demapping?
So there, there's no estimate. This is because those renderings of the open spaces are just illustrative. There are no plans to have concessions or any rides up there. Those are light shows that, and art elements, there were no, there are no actual rides up there. So there was nothing to explore, but it is the perfect space for light elements and art for that area.
All right, two more questions around.
We just learned something very big, everybody.
Is, is this a good location for a casino, oil casino, given the risk of sea level rise? Please hold your comments, thank you so much.
We are really looking at opportunities for enhancements, enhancements for resiliency. Making sure that we're addressing these concerns by, as what our exercise is right now, by demapping Stillwell in order to raise the street bed and then further raising the entrances as, as often as we can along Stillwell. Much of the project is above the design flood elevation, meaning it's getting above their day-to-day flooding as well as the extreme events. In the areas where we want to make sure that we're maintaining the street activation, we are making sure that along Surf, we're maintaining that street presence that's existing currently and then allowing for deployment of flood mitigation in, in the event that it's needed so that we have the opportunities to make sure that we're maintaining that street presence as well as allowing resiliency.
Thank you. And last question, will the applicant team be preparing and implementing an evacuation plan in the event of a natural disaster?
Yes, we, we have been studying that plan along all the iterations of the design process to make sure that it's on front forms and art design, seeing strategies in place.
Thank you. The panel is now excused.
Thank you so much for your time.
We will now call for testimony on this application from members of the public in attendance tonight. Please note that all comments are limited to two minutes. To ensure we can hear from all of you and you can hear from all your neighbors, please, limited to, we'll, we'll keep it limited to two minutes. And speakers, as they are called, can stand to the side behind the podium. And the first speaker will be Stephen Deema, followed by Ann Valdez.
Brooklyn Borough President. My name is Stephen Deema, born and raised in Brooklyn and still here. I come to you today as someone who cherishes the complex and organic vitality of our city. I come to you as some who believes that, yes, you surely must, that cities live or die by the diversity and energy of their streets, by the people who shape them with their labor and their culture and their care. And today I come to you with the urgent concern mirroring many others. This casino project threatens to unravel the very social fabric that makes this historic place a living, breathing community, rather than the sterile playground for the imagined wealthy. Coney Island is no stranger to spectacle, a profit-driven reinvention. But its spirit, its magic is never dependent on exclusionary luxury or predatory industries. Rather, it has always been a place of democratic joy, a space where working-class families, immigrants and everyday New Yorkers can find escape, wonder and leisure, a true urban commons and open to all. Introducing a casino into this delicate ecosystem is not only short-sighted, but an actual, but an act of cultural vandalism. Time and again, as we all know, cities that embrace casinos face increased economic disparities, small business, small business closures, rising crime and the siphoning of wealth out of neighborhoods rather than into them. Coney Island, a place that has long been a bastion of artistic expression and community resilience, such a project is an outright, outright affront. Coney Island needs your support in blocking this project, instead pushing for an investment that truly serves the people, affordable housing, cultural spaces and infrastructure that strengthens rather than drains. A city's strength lies in its people, not in its speculative profits of a corporate gambling experience. Coney Island deserves better, Brooklyn deserves better, New York City deserves better. And we call upon you to help us protect the spirit of this irreplaceable place before it's too late. I urge you to use your power to defend one of New York's last great public realms from the encroachment of an industry that will only take and never give back. God bless Coney Island and God bless Brooklyn.
Show your support with your hands and with your signs and so with your voices so we can continue to hear everyone. Thank you so much.
The next speaker will be Ann Valdez, followed by Adam Rinn.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ann Valdez. I'm born and raised in Coney Island. I'm a third generation in Coney Island. And out of the 100 years that they spoke about, I've been on this earth almost 60 of them. In all this time, while I was watching the, the show here, to me, that's all it was, was just a show. Okay, all you saw was a bunch of lights and all this temptation and beautiful sights. That's not fitting in Coney Island. That's not fitting literally, nor is it fitting in there figuratively. All right, this is not Coney Island. Coney Island, as my friend just said right before me, is the individuals, the families, the modern pop businesses, the actual entertainment for everyone. We're not going backwards into peep shows unless, unless we give it to Adam. All right, but other than that, now seriously, this is a community that is a bunch of families. No casino should be anywhere this close to families. We are a tiny community. We pretty much know each other. And if we don't know each other, it's because, due to the fact of so many more people coming from other neighborhoods because they love our neighborhood, we have a lot of newcomers, but that's funny. We're, Coney Island is a community that welcomes new people, welcomes people who don't look like each other. We are people, not robots. We are people who struggle to take care of our families, not sit here throwing money around like it comes off of a tree. Okay, this is not Coney Island. Please, I beg of the Borough President and everyone else involved, please do not allow this to go through. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker will be Adam Rinn, followed by Johanna Grease.
Greetings, I'm Adam Rinn, Artistic Director of Coney Island USA. For over 40 years, Coney Island USA has been the neighborhood's most unique and longest operating arts organization. Our mission is to preserve the history and the arts of Coney Island. Over the past few months, our organization, along with a group of dedicated residents and business owners, have led a grassroots movement against this casino. Unlike the casino's army of lobbyists who were paid handsomely to promote its identity with a seemingly endless budget for promotional shirts, tote bags, gift cards and cash to coerce people to attend community board meetings, and yes, even this public hearing, as well as the expense of hiring tour buses to get them to the meetings, we are the voice of the people, the people that truly care about this place that we, that we reside in, that we work in, that we play in. Now I'm going to address some of the things that were discussed here specific to the demapping. Raising the height of the street will only cause runoff to flood our landmark building, which is just north of the casino on the, on the south side Surf Avenue. By the way, we have never seen a study on how this construction will affect the structural integrity of our 107-year-old building. We will also see idling trucks on 12th Street trying to get into their loading dock. Demapping Stillwell to make it a commercial space will just lure people into the casino. Of course, blocking off Stillwell will just create more traffic on Surf. Talking about signage on the belt parkway, there's literally one street going in. Sky bridges that pay homage to the Coney Island of the past, let me tell you a secret, they wanted those sky bridges 100 years ago. That said, I have had the opportunity to shake hands with and meet the Borough President and the Deputy Borough President many times. I appeal to them both, please reject this casino.
The next speaker is Johanna Grease, followed by Marissa Solomon.
Hey, my name is Johanna. Um, I actually live in Sunset Park, about 20 minutes from Coney. It is my sanctuary. During COVID, I went there and it was peaceful and beautiful. That blue that you showed is going to be ruined with all the pollution you're going to bring, the amount of cars. And I understand some people here are saying, yes, people, that they're not going to give you jobs. They're going to ruin this, they are relying to you. I actually talked to several people here, I'm addressing you with the board, who admitted to me that they're paid to be here and also that they wanted to gamble. We're preying on people with gambling addiction. I don't know if you heard recently, the poor woman who was set on fire by that gentleman who wasn't tired. on fire by that gentleman who was intoxicated. You're going to get way more intoxicated people out here. You're going to get people that may be dangerous to be at Coney Island at night. You're going to have this around children. I'm an educator. I don't like that. That's not cool. And again, pollution. So I don't even understand why this is being considered. I think it's disgusting. You allow them to speak for over an hour and then you limit us to three minutes and we live here. We live in this city. It's infuriating and frustrating and there's no good that comes from this. I get it. I'm poor too. I want more money too. I get it. But it's not the answer. This casino was a disaster and it's going to ruin a landmark. That probably number one Oscar movie actually was filmed over at Coney Island. You think that's going to happen again if it's ruined by this casino? Please, guys, I'm with you. I understand that you need money, I do too, but it's not for that. Please don't ruin Coney Island. Please find somewhere else. I would love it, guys.
The next speaker is Marissa Solomon, followed by Angela Venero. Angela, sorry if I mispronounced names also, by the way. Angela's last name R.A.N.E.
I.E.R.I., sorry.
Borough President Menoso must deny the application to de-map the streets in Coney Island. To hand over the public streets in Coney Island in order to allow this billionaire, Joe Sid, to replace the Coney Island amusement area with a casino would completely destroy over 150 years of history and character of Coney Island, taking away the people's playground from all New Yorkers and turning it into a playground for billionaires. I live directly across the street from the casino site in Luna Park Houses, one of the largest affordable Mitchell Lama housing developments in New York with over 6,000 residents, which have provided safe, affordable housing to working New Yorkers for generations. But the proposed casino in Coney Island poses a major and direct threat to our ability to even be able to continue living in our homes. It will bring a tremendous increase in traffic, increased pollution, and will prevent ambulances and other emergency vehicles from reaching our buildings and endangering our lives. It will bring an increase in crime right to our front doors with large, rowdy, and noisy crowds spilling out from the massive 24-hour-a-day casino complex and into the streets around our buildings. The casino will threaten and undermine the very viability of our housing development, which is one of the most successful developments in the city, providing affordable housing to city's residents. At a time when the city and state governments have made it a priority to preserve and build more affordable housing, it makes no sense whatsoever to put at risk and jeopardize affordable income housing developments in Coney Island for the empty promises from this billionaire, Joe Sid, who has a long record of not keeping his promises, as evidenced by his many loan defaults, lawsuits, and court closures. Approving this application would take away everything from one group of working-class people to supposedly give an annual benefits to another group of working-class people, all to ultimately really benefit the billionaire developer, Joe Sid, who already has everything. This is a bad deal from just the standpoint of making a deal, but it's also just another version of the trickle-down economics that Republican politicians have been trying to sell working people for decades and one that a progressive Democratic politician like Borough President Menoso should not be making.
The next speaker is Angela Venero, followed by Madison, last name S.P.E.R. You can go ahead.
Hey, I'm Angela Venery. I'm just a big fan of Coney Island. I live in Brooklyn Flatbush and I'm a small business owner in the city. Coney Island has always been my safe space when I first moved here. And I just love it. And I know that a casino can do terrible things. Casinos don't do any good. Atlantic City sucks. The second you get away from the boardwalk. Vegas is awful. Look at Queens by where that casino was built. It's awful. Nothing good. We deserve something better. I would love to see more small businesses. Thor Equity owns the buildings that aren't letting small businesses operate because you're pricing everybody else. You are the enemy and you're trying to be our savior and you can't be both. I'm Angela Venery.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker will be Madison Spencer, followed by Maxine Uppido.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Maxine. My bad if I'm a Coney Island resident, drag artist, small business owner. And out of all those things, I stand strongly in opposition to this casino because it will make everything for me as a resident and a small business owner and a creative in this area worse. However, specifically since this meeting is about de-mapping, I do want to talk about de-mapping because those are our streets and I'm having a sense of deja vu that we just had an election where we fell for the lies of the billionaires who promised us so many good things and we're going to give away our country to a couple of billionaires. So we already sold our country, so we're going to sell our streets to billionaires. And I'm sorry, I want to talk to you, when people were laughing when you said that this is like honoring the history and all of that, we don't believe you because you have these properties for how many years and you've done nothing and you've allowed historic buildings in that area to decompose. So you have no respect for Coney Island history. You have no respect for the community. You haven't spoken to Coney Island USA. You haven't spoken to people who live in Luna Park. I live in Warvis. You haven't spoken to us. So when you said that you work in the community, I don't concur the people that you're talking about. So please, dear Brooklyn Borough President, do not give away our streets. Do not take away Coney Island because this will also endanger all the arts and culture that are happening in this area. And Coney Island is the center of New York culture. This will endanger Brighton Beach Pride, like I'm the main organizer of, and this will endanger the Neptune Parade, which is the country's oldest art parade. So I see no benefits to this and I see no benefits to giving away our public streets to the billionaires. Thank you very much.
If you'd like to ask if you show your support with your hands and with your signs just so we can ensure we can hear all of you.
The next speaker is Jenny Hernandez, followed by Jean Patrick Dubon.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Hernandez, speaking as a resident of Coney Island. They claim that the casino will provide flood protection to the community has no basis in reality. The only thing that may be protected is their building. In fact, this project may increase storm surge flooding on adjacent streets. They claim that the boardwalk acts as a natural flood barrier. This is not true. The storm surge from Hurricane Sandy came right over it. They claim that the proposed project will alleviate a portion of the ongoing and constant flooding damage to the Coney Island neighborhood as a result of rising sea levels due to climate change. This statement is not true and is based on absolutely nothing. They did not do any studies on the impact of the storm surge hitting this massive structure and whether it would make flood damage worse on nearby streets. Therefore, I say no to the de-mapping of our streets. Those streets belong to the people of Coney Island, not for billionaires. Las calles de Coney Island son para el pueblo, no para los ricos. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jean Patrick Dubon, followed by Erica Turner.
Hi, I just wanted to read some stuff that I have in my thoughts. Kind of laid out in the way. Major construction. So especially for wheelchair users, I mean, I know it's going to affect everyone, but major construction is a nightmare. Like, not only is it, you know, going up, but sometimes majors, this is going to require tearing up the streets, laying down new pipes and plumbing. And yeah, it's annoying for, you know, your average person, but if you're in a wheelchair, it's a nightmare. We just need to know, familiar with, that you're comfortable with, that are safe, that are not broken-up sidewalks and, you know, shitty asphalt. Are going to change drastically. You have to go all the way out of your way, the bodega, pharmacy, the train station, basic necessity, you know? Other points I wanted to make is, you know, you don't need to look at Google to realize that billionaires don't have our best interests in mind. But if you look up Joseph Sid, who is the founder and chairman of Thor Equities, the Google says he is not technically considered a billionaire, but is quote, "very successful real estate investor with a large portfolio worth billions of dollars, making him extremely wealthy," which is like a nice way of saying, you know, billionaire. Thor Equities is worth 20 billion. If you look on Thor Equities, it literally says, "Thor Equity's goal is to identify and maximize the holdings and the value of its holdings and generate strong returns for their investors." That's what they care about. Not bringing jobs to the people and the community. They don't give shit about the community or the culture. It's all about money and turning a dollar for themselves. What else, what else, what else? They care about profit. They lost two buildings in a hack before closure this summer. And that just goes to show that what they promise does not happen necessarily. All right, so yeah. And then re-rating, you know, elevations, the Wall Avenue, Sirah Backing is going to be an extreme nightmare for wheelchair users. Not only will crazy construction, it's going to have to happen, but increasing inclines. One of the reasons I love this neighborhood so much is it's flat and wheelchair-friendly. This is going to detract from that. Thank you.
The next speaker is Erica Turner, followed by Jesse Krebs.
Hello, everyone. I strongly oppose the de-mapping of our community street to make way for the developers and the political lapdogs to put the Coney Casino into our community, a beachfront community who serves Dallas the best every year, year-round. According to East Boston Community Forum, they heard the same thing from the billionaires. And what happened with that? They believed them. They let them come in. And the only thing they received was prosecution, increase in traffic, more drunk driving, calls to 911, cut through the door. Many restaurants closed and pawn shops started to pop up everywhere. The casino offered wages to these people with dead-end jobs. But then they began to lay off the people and add more slack shoulders. Why? Because the casino said they don't take the day off. Just to be clear, I was not paid to be here like many people were. I ain't here because I love my family. I love my community. And I say no to corruption. And I say no to this casino. And nobody, because they're not like us. You know, they use Aminers. And just looking at the pictures that you showed over West 12th Street, there are schools here. You want to bring big buses down that block. Where there's an elementary school and a daycare center. Does that make sense? You need to go back to your drawing board or find another community and set the casino there. We don't want it. We don't need it and we do not have to have it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jesse Krebs, followed by Elijah K. Herren.
I can't help but notice that you changed your language from casino to gaming facility because you know how bad casinos are. I love that it is cowards. It is a casino. And you know, if you really cared about the community, you would be investing in current structures in the community, not pulling over top, not suffocating it. With de-mapping, local family-owned businesses are threatened. The nonprofit arts organization, Coney Island USA that I work for, is threatened. Where there are casinos, there are rises in suicide, domestic violence, and addiction, gambling or otherwise, rates. This is how you destroy a community. So I got to ask, do you want a casino or do you want a community? Because I want a community.
The next speaker is Elijah K. Herren, followed by Samuel Cooper.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elijah. I'm born and raised in Brooklyn and I'm proud to call South Brooklyn my home. We've heard a lot of talk this evening about the merits of a casino in this community. But I think it's also important to talk about who would be developing said casino. For twenty years, CEO Joe Sid and Thor Equities have owned substantial property in Coney Island's amusement district. Talk is cheap. They've spent twenty years to show us what they think of our community. In that twenty years, they have spent those twenty years forcing out small business tenants and turning their landholdings into trash-filled, rat-infested lots, goes for the sake of speculative profits for themselves. They claim that their casino will sit on, most of it is undeveloped property. What they don't mention is that it's undeveloped because they bought it, let the historic buildings crumble to dust, and then forced out the small business tenants so they can say, oh, now it's undeveloped. We're just going to make it nice. Meanwhile, we have been asking for it to be made better instead of just filling up with the trash heap for twenty years. They claim they care about this community. They didn't even bother to shovel and salt the sidewalks outside their property district. They care about their community. Can't they spend a hundred dollars to make someone split on the ice and kill themselves? Right, they have, this is what they think of us, of our community, our city, and our streets. And now they are saying that they want to take those streets and own them for themselves. They have no business owning our streets. The Thor Equities playbook has always been the same. Trample on small business and spit on the community as long as it can turn a profit for them. They have spent twenty years doing this. Thor Equities may come here with billions of dollars, false promises, and an army of pated so-called interested members of the public, but they have spent twenty years, like I said, talk is cheap. Twenty years of action speaks volumes about what they are actually going to do for this community. We come here on behalf of the community, saying that Thor Equities and this casino has no business in our community or owning our streets. Thank you for that time.
The next speaker is Samuel Cooper, followed by Marie Mirvel Shazad.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not from Coney Island. I'm from the other side, Manor Hopsage. And I've been around casinos and I've listened to all that everybody said about casinos. As long as I've been in this planet and visit casinos, they work. Casinos work. Because we have seniors that are going to get out after sixty, seventy and want a casino to go. If I'm wanting a casino, I have to go to Pennsylvania or that decision. That's what I'm saying. I'm off-queads. Off-queads. I'm here and I'm listening to everybody who wants a casino. And nobody in the area gave up with anything positive. Not even ours, I want casinos. Casinos are the best. They're all around the world. They're in every community. They want to put them in. And I'm saying, I'm wishing and hoping. I've got friends in Coney Island. And I'm hoping that this goes through. If it does, I'm happy. If it does not, I'm still up. I love you people, but give it a chance. You've got to give it a chance. Give a casino a chance. I'll say one up. If it's not, if they put it up, we can take it out. That's all. Okay, so I'm going to save a knife for the crowd and hope everybody get up safe. And I'm a military person. All right, I've lived in Manor Houses for over fifty years. So I'm looking for changes. If there's any change coming up, I want to embrace it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Marie Mirvel Shazad, followed by Paula Bosco.
My name is Marie Mirvel Shazad. I'm an Executive Director of Altadena Community Services. I'm a business owner out in Coney Island. My husband's been doing the business there for the last about almost thirty years. I'm 100% in favor of the Coney Casino and Resort Development. Coney Island, especially from Stillwell to West 36, and I'm talking about Stillwell from West 36, is a diverse, vibrant community, but it is lacking in resources. It's lacking in investment. It's lacking in opportunities. It's lacking in good jobs. All of you who, you know, Coney Island USA, yay. Dino Park, yay. Luna Park, yay. But you are not the only ones in Coney Island. I'm talking about the Paul's. They're hurting. At my nonprofit, I have tons of people asking me for jobs. And I send them to city jobs. I send them to hiring calls. At my nonprofit, I have tons of people asking me for jobs and I send them to City Jobs and send them to Hiring Hall. There are people asking for food for their children. We do pop-up pantries and the line is around the block. The Coney Casino Development, their team has come out and listened to the people, the residents of Coney Island. And they've worked with us, you see their initiatives. They've come out and said, "Okay, they need jobs, they need this, they need that" and they've worked with it. Me myself have gone from resident to resident to resident. And a lot of them are in favor of the casino, the resort. However, they are scared. Me myself has been bullied by people here, by people there, the community board has put me on social media. I was giving out candy, people came up to me harassing me with my two children giving out candy. I have people going to my store telling their children to rob my store, which I have a video camera and I will get in order protection on them and their children. That's why people are afraid to come here. A lot of residents in Coney Island want this.
The next speaker is Paula Boswell followed by Andrew Alvarado.
Hi, I'm a super parent, I've heard about that through the debate.
Can you please speak closer to the microphone? Excuse me, thank you.
I just think that this is a really stupid idea and I think that to your part, you have to think that too, beyond your profits and the bottom line and whatever. I'm actually surprised with the amount of community members that came out and supported this. I'm sure you're being handsomely incentivized by maybe too bad, sorry. But I truly believe you guys are being sold a dream and I think that this will actually cause a lot more harm to your community than I think. Coney Island is a place for families and joy, it's a place that I've gone to my entire life. I've been raised and been around the area. And I just think about a lot of, I've heard a lot of the conversations and they were about jobs being created close to their homes and you know, you might have a job at the end of all this, but I'm not sure if you have a home, honestly. But yeah, I just, I think this will be another failed development. And just like the amphitheater and you know, the bat mall they're building by the ferry in Sound Island, like you guys have to know this, the amphitheater, just look at some of the other executives.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker is Angel Alvarado followed by Anthony Batiste.
Hello, good evening everybody, my name is Angel Alvarado and I live in Seagate, Coney Island. And I've been coming to Coney Island for many, many years. I started here in 1957. I'm 73 years old. And I believe that a lot of things have changed here. A lot of things have changed in all the time that I've seen and come here, but I love Coney Island. And whether or not we're against it or we're in favor of the casino, I believe that 90% of the people here go to casinos.
Please, please hold your responses, we're unable to hear them.
But whether or not you're telling yourself that you don't, please, I know better. And I believe that if it comes through, I'm going to love it. Because there are people who say, "Oh, we don't want it in our community." But we want it and everybody else is putting it on. So that's where you go. You don't go over there, you don't want to have it in your backyard. Ain't nothing going to happen because I have never heard of anybody be killed or anything going bad that way. You can go and have fun and entertain yourself and that's it. Thank you everyone.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask again that we please hold all comments so that we can clearly hear everyone who is taking the time and energy to come here and speak about their opinions, so.
The next speaker is Anthony Batiste followed by Jake Turner, I believe.
Hello, good evening everybody, as you know, I'm Anthony Batiste. Alright, I'm a community leader, I have that, I'm the executive director of Coney Island's, guys. Listen, we're going to respect you, you guys know me better than that, give me my respect. You're going to respect me and I want my time, thank you. I want my time, you're going to respect me. We could talk all that, but we all know I live on West 19, people. So, give me my respect. Alright, there we go. So, as you know, I've always been a person that said I'm not, I don't go into casinos, I don't gamble. I say the same speech everywhere I go, but I'm not thinking about myself. Everyone here, like generally I just said, most people go to casinos, I don't. You don't want it in Coney Island, that's fine, I understand that. In the beginning, I said it too. Do I want it? I don't like casinos, period. But if we look, the median income for Coney Island is what? 44,000. The poverty rate in Coney Island is 25% compared to 18%. Hold on, don't clap, please don't clap, let me speak. 18% compared to the 18% across the city. Now, this meeting is about demapping. I say demapping because at the end of the day, like the lady says, she said she can build the casino no matter what. So if you, if you don't demap it, they're not going to fix the streets, they're not going to fix the sidewalk. They don't have to do those things. They don't have to. Let's think about that. So you want your streets fixed or you don't want the streets fixed? So, in addition to that, in addition to that, my friend over here, he said, he said about the casino people not speaking to you guys. But let's take this consideration this. Do you speak to our people that are outraged and screaming at you and want to be in your face? You don't want to deal with people like that. If you give them, if you give them, if you try to forgive them because they keep cutting you off. If you give them an opportunity to speak to them, they listen. Because there's a couple of things that I did propose to them, they listen and they put it into action. So give them an opportunity and see what happens.
The next speaker is.
Somebody left their sign up here.
The next speaker is Jake Turner followed by Renee Geary.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here today to sound the alarm about the casino that Thor Equities wants to build in the heart of Coney Island. Let's be clear, this isn't about progress, it's about profit. Thor Equities sees Coney Island as nothing more than a cash cow and they want to strip away everything that makes this place unique for their own gain. Coney Island isn't just land, it's Ruby's Bar and Grill, a local treasure that's been serving the community for decades. It's Williams County where homemade sweets fill the air and nostalgia of that place hits you in the gut. This place is full of history, charm and life. Thor Equities doesn't care about any of that. They see dollar signs and they're willing to bulldoze our heritage to make a quick buck. The casino isn't going to bring prosperity, it's going to bring crime, addiction and chaos. It will disrupt everything that makes Coney Island special. The small businesses, the community, the families that make that place a home. Ruby's, Williams and other local gems will be replaced with neon lights and corporate greed. This casino will bring nothing but noise, traffic jams, pollution, drowning out the history that made Coney Island legendary. Thor Equities doesn't care about our families, our children, who needs safe, vibrant spaces. They don't care about the small businesses struggling to survive. They only care about the profit margins. We are simply lying items in a book. We are not going to let them turn Coney Island into a wasteland of casinos and corporate greed. Enough is enough. This is a time to make a stand against the billionaires who want to control us. This is in your hands, Borough President. Please, make the correct decision and understand that Coney Island is not for sale. Thank you.
The next speaker is Renee Geary followed by Janine Ramirez.
Good evening everybody, my name is Renee Geary, I've been out here for 69 years. I've seen it when it was beautiful and I see it why it's ugly now. People who live out there in Coney Island toyed it out on their own. So therefore, why not get it built up? We need it built up. You understand? Because it looks, we ain't got nothing out there as it is. It's nothing out there. All the stores are closed up from Sandy. And everybody, people went out there when we asked Sandy and talked their own neighborhood. So how can you complain about something up on the casino? How dare you? You understand? For that, I can be, build up that casino. And as far as the children and the school, how about these mermaids walking around getting naked? Okay? Stop that nonsense. There's a lot of things that been going on and I've been watching. And I'm going on 70 years old. So therefore, you know, I tell y'all, build up that casino.
Please hold your comments so that we can hear, all speakers. Excuse me, please hold your comments so that we can hear everybody, we're not able to hear any of those comments.
The next speaker is Sheila Smalls followed by Anna Duras.
Good evening everyone, I have a testimony, my testimony is here. I am in favor of the demapping so that this way that cars will be able to come into the area for the casino and I agree 100%. But first of all, let me just tell y'all something. I've been out in Coney Island a whole 65 years and I've helped each and every one of you anywhere that I am. Okay, I am a community leader, I'm also a leader in my development. And a lot of my residents do not want the casino. And I asked them why and they really can't comprehend or say why. I'm a person that is, I would gather off a glass, you can see it half empty or half full. You understand? And I am a recipient of a community agreement for the Downtown Brooklyn Community Association and have been receiving tickets to all the shows, to the Barclay, giving them out to everyone who ever wanted in my neighborhood, you know? And if you have a partner that's really going to work with you, every developer is not the worst one. Okay, you got to hold people accountable. If you don't hold people accountable, then they're not going to do anything for you. Like our baseball field, they came and promised everything that they was going to give to Coney Island and they ain't giving us nothing, okay? Like the people that came out there and said, "Oh no, we don't want a shelter out here." We don't want them people out here, they built the shelter anyway. Okay, those people are not bothering anybody, the shelter's beautiful and not bothering anyone. And what upsets me the most is that y'all have to gall your death to try to bully somebody. I'm a bully, you understand? I'm a bully. Don't step to me, do not step to me about what you think. We all have our own opinions. You understand? That doesn't make me doubt you any less because you don't agree with what I'm saying. Okay, I'm also a member of Local 69 and trained construction workers with work. When it's time to work, we get them jobs. I work, you understand? So don't sit there and say, "Oh, Coney Island don't need this." I work on the west and be respectful, young men.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the trains, be respectful, be respectful, okay? That's another problem.
Thank you so much for your comments. Thank you so much.
Did I have like too many to say something?
No, it's already over. Thank you so much, I appreciate your comments.
I need to say this. Whether you agree or you don't agree, respect one another, okay? Because you got to walk the streets all the time and trust me, I do.
Thank you so much. I think we need to have a little room reset. Thank you all so much for your participation and for being here. But we really do need to be able to hear everyone who is speaking. It is a lot of time and dedication that you all are giving to this and we need to be able to hear everybody and have everyone's. Thank you so much. And everybody needs to be able to hear each other, so thank you so much. But we're going to have to.
No you don't, no you don't, no you don't. Let me catch you on the west side. Let me catch you on the west side. You and everybody else, everybody else that want to get, y'all must be, y'all just want to.
Okay, okay, everybody please sit on the.
Y'all got to get the bad on the stuff, you ain't got a zipper or a tie in it.
Either pro or against, but we have to respect each other.
You been talking the whole night.
I'm sorry, it's going to get to the point where if we can't have civilized conversations and listen to each other, you will be removed. Because this is an important process that needs to take place. We need to be able to hear each other. Because it is a legal process that we have to deal with. And if we can't hear because your emotions are running so high, what did the Borough President say? Give space and grace to each other. And that means allowing people to speak. And do not make comments, snide comments, laugh, whatever. Hold it, okay? That's what the Borough President asked for. We are better than this. Thank you, okay?
The next speaker is Anna Duras followed by Julia Daniele.
I actually hate my first name and that was a hard act to follow. I'm actually known as Daisy, I have lived here since 1977. Brief history lesson, topless is allowed on public beaches from Queens down to Seagate, period. As far as express trains go, we haven't had an express train until just recently when the B was bought back and that's only during weekdays. The ferry, don't get me started. We waited 14 years for a ferry. First, the pier was too tall. Then, oh god, we're going to put it by Kaiser Park, which is too far away, we'll open one bus to connect to the ferry, the B-36. You still have to walk across the park to get to the dock. And that ferry does not honor transfers, by the way. So you're already paying an extra fare, period. As far as blocking off Stillwell Avenue, you could disrupt the B-36, the B-68, the B-64, the B-82. They will all have to be rerouted, thereby disrupting the B-1, the B-4, the B-49. And I said the B-3. And all the interconnecting buses would also have to be rerouted. As far as Sandy goes, yeah, we got hit hard. That's one way all the way up to King's Highway and cross over to Avenue U and down to Bay Parkway. So in either direction, if you weren't walking, you weren't getting anywhere because the trains were disrupted, the buses were disrupted. So flood protection? Where? You're going to build the wall all the way past King's Highway? You're going to build it past Bay Parkway? Oh, and let's not talk about traffic, especially foot traffic, especially on mermaid parade day where we're now walking single file on the boardwalk because we got peddlers to the left of us, peddlers to the right of us, peddlers behind us and peddlers ahead of us when we used to have the whole boardwalk. You can't have a casino unless you address quality of life. Our walls has become nothing more than a place to nutcrackers, marijuana and this, that, the dirt and hacks being sold and everything under the sun, all kinds of trafficking illegally. E-bikes, e-scooters, plowing into people on the boardwalk, on the side trees. Now you got, you know.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Yes, they're selling actual barbecue out of shopping carts up on Surf Island. You can't have it all, you got to pick one or the other. Same Coney Island, USA.
Thank you so much.
Keep the mermaid.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Julia Daniele followed by Sherlaine Davis.
Hi everyone, hello everyone, my name is Julia Daniele. I'm a Coney Island resident for over 60 years. Let's say the West End is a dead zone. We need the job, I don't care what anybody says, we need the job. They're battling, battling. We're talking about streets, I'm in a wheelchair for eight and a half and the streets are bumpy now. So just because, all the issues that you're saying are already there, they have nothing to do with the casino. The streets that have been demapped have minimal, minimal activities going on. You're worried about the mermaid parade? The parade is still going to happen, what's the big deal? This is going to be a community binding agreement, we make it legal and binding. I don't know what that, you're dealing with, but if we sit down at the table, yeah, that's going to be legal and binding. We're gonna get a lawyer. It doesn't have to be their lawyer. There's a lot of other things that you... Just sit down and ask them. Maybe there's something that can be worked out. Historical buildings, if you're renting it, you should be taking care of the building as well, not just the landlord. And it's his property. It's his property. I'll be damned if it was my property. You told me what to do with it. Something is gonna come. But let's make it beneficial for all of us. Because Coney Island doesn't just belong to you. It belongs to me and my children and my grandchildren too. Okay? My neighbor next door, and there's a lot more people for the casino than what you think. They're just tired of being bullied. Because we all been bullied, like you said, all the time. He told me some either, either, either through social media, either in person, either the snide looks. It, you know, and it's not fair because the same way we let you speak and say your piece, this always happens. This is the first time, I must say, that we've been able to say some stuff and be heard. Because anywhere we go, they never let us say what we feel. Coney Island belongs to me too. I love Coney Island. Coney Island belongs to me too. And it's in the heart of the jungle, right on West Twenty-third Street. Okay? I don't own another house with a big fence. And a lot of the men and women that I speak to, they look for jobs. They look for jobs. And having a job close to home makes it all much better to be able to be there for your children after school, before school. They, and you speak to the Coney, they're gonna provide you training. Whatever stuff is needed, they're gonna provide the certifications that are needed, the schoolings that are needed. They are gonna... And I'm gonna make sure as a community leader, I don't know what kind of community leaders you guys are, but you guys, Tom, I'm gonna hold you to it. And I'm gonna make sure that what we promise us is gonna come to life. Because we've been jerked so much. We've been shortchanged before this. We have plenty of setups. What are you mad? Because we held up for the highest bidder? Shit, our community deserves the highest. So let's, let's keep it one hundred. Respect me the way I respect you because I can get real little King, Nod chair. It just doesn't matter. We all live there. You, Coney Island is just not worth. I'm there too.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Sherlaine Davis, followed by Lucy Uvica Diaz.
Oh, yes, I wasn't paid even. I don't have a job. I love it. Good evening, everyone. My name is Charlotte Davis. And as you can see, I'm also a little kid. I lived in Coney Island for over forty-five years. My concern with everything that they're saying about building this casino is the promises that they're making. They're saying that they're going to give us jobs. Is it just talk or is it reality? Who holds them accountable when we don't get these jobs? Is there something in writing that says this is what they're going to do? Everything that they're promising us and that they're showing us on these maps and stuff, are you putting these things in writing? Who's watching the watcher? Who's watching the overseer? When it comes to evacuation? With being in a wheelchair, it's not easy to evacuate. I lived right on Bayview and Thirty-Third. So many people died when Sandy happened. We have to think about Coney Island and Coney Island is a phoenician. It is not easy to get off of. It's not that many ways in and out. We're so tired of people coming in and saying what they wanna give us. What happened to, when you come off the subway, right across the street, they did a mirror. It's beautiful. But the building that's right here, when you get off, is an eyesore. And he owns that. If you can build this casino without doing the de-mapping, then why not do so? Why go to all of this? We have said to them time and time again, there's other things that we need in the community as well. Are you willing to help us get back? When they talk about this two-hundred-and-fifty billion dollar debt that they're supposed to be putting in a pot that's supposed to help the community, who's overseeing where that money goes to? And making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing? It's got to be a system of checks and balances. And if not, then we don't need it.
Thank you so much. Your comments.
The next speaker is Lucy Uvica Diaz, uh, followed by Melba, I believe the last name starts with an S-I, Singer, maybe?
Community binding agreements cannot be binding because the funding is never guaranteed that it will keep coming in. Two-hundred million dollars that is going to be, is going to be a one-shot deal. It is a dime in the bucket for them, for the billions that they're gonna make off of us. The casino will bring over twenty-three thousand people on weekends, on weekdays, and over thirty-five thousand people on weekends, which will, um, continue, well, excuse me, which would, um, add congestion to us. What is now a seasonal danger to the residents of the West Side will become a year-round danger with emergency vehicles unable to get past the location of the proposed casino. They looked at forty-five intersections in the area leading to the casino. They admitted that these forty-five intersection traffics is sixty-seven lanes group in, in already at unacceptable levels if the casino is built. That figure, that figure will almost double at one-hundred-and-twenty-three lane groups. That is unacceptable. By their own admission, traffic will peak during school dismissals. Despite building a fifteen-hundred thou, fifteen-hundred car garage, this proposal will take... Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. Will take every, um, area of parking in the space and cannot be guaranteed that it's only for the casino patrons. They assure that the garage in every space, in every parking lot in the area, there will still be a one-thousand spaces that people will be looking for. Borough President also, it is evidence that this community is not in favor of this project. And my guaranteeing the de-mapping will, will give them more power to move forward. Please vote it down as the community has demanded. It is disgusting that they continue bringing people in and paying them to be here and speak on their behalf. Thank you.
The next speaker is Melba Singer, followed by Paula Jenkins.
Oh, hi. My name is Melissa. Hi, my name is Melissa. I'm from Brooklyn. Go sit to the microphone, sit.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Um, my name is Melissa. I'm from Brooklyn. I went to school in Coney Island almost thirty years ago. And the idea of having a casino built, uh, stick it to me because I've seen places like the Resorts Casino in Queens, where like now my aunt's become an addict, which, you know, she goes there every week. And I can't stand seeing her like that. I work with people with mental health and addiction, and it's something I'm proud for. I wanna see people work as a community and not worry about money or anything like that. There's other things to worry about than a casino. Sorry. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Paula Jenkins, followed by, I believe it's Malik Mern.
Good evening. My name is Paula Jenkins. I live in Marlboro. I lived here in nineteen sixty. I have friends and family in Coney Island. Um, this is my first meeting. And, um, when I was first told about the casino, I was told that phones would be taken away. People knocked out of their phones and everything. But then I got more information, and I was told that nobody would lose their housing bullets. I see... They took them? They didn't kill them. They will be on your side. We'll help you get them back. But, um, they were saying that, um, it's gonna generate jobs. I see Coney. I see Marlboro. It's declining. These people are out there idle. They on drugs. We have crackers coming in and out of the village. You know? So we need to get this taken care of, and these people promise that we will get funding and we help. So now, um, I say yes to the casino. If it goes through, fine. Not, fine. But if it goes through and they do not come through with their promises, just the way we got them, they can get out. You know? They can get out. Don't go. You're not for it, don't go. But all the screaming and hollering, that's not less than it. You know, it's not less than it. Y'all been to the twenties, the twenty weekends? Shouldn't be at this one.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
The next speaker, uh, Malik Mern. Malik Mern is the next speaker. And if not, then Dashia Powell. Dashia Powell or Samara Powell then? Um, so the next speaker is, uh, Stephanie Arwella. Arwella. Is Stephanie here?
This is Crackhead Barney, everybody.
I don't see anything funny. I don't see anything funny. I know my ass is out today, it's hot. And this hot, I would dress less on at Mermaid Parade. But you know what? I'm sick and tired of corporate fucking greed. I'm sick and tired of fucking corporate greed. I understand the whole rhetoric of it creates jobs, and it creates this, and it creates that. But you're gonna get priced out. You're gonna get priced out of your fucking home. The residents are complaining that it creates jobs, it creates training. Not for you. They want you to get the fuck out. It's not for you. It's for probably other people. It's not for you. I'm sick and tired of corporate greed. I'm sick and tired of Trump. I'm sick and tired of Elon. I'm sick and tired of this billionaire bullshit, this corruption. And you have to understand, a casino is not built for you. It's not built for fucking you. I'm sick and tired of this shit. Um, but I understand, the residents are blaming because they think it creates jobs. But you're gonna get priced out. If you're in the projects, it's gonna get privatized. If you're in like a, a fucked up house, it's gonna get privatized. Thor Equities, what the fuck? What the fuck Thor Equities mean? It means white devil shit. It means white devil shit. And they not looking for the niggas in the neighborhood and trying to help them and create jobs and bullshit. I'm just sick and tired. I'm so tired. I'm so mad about what happened with the war, with the, I don't know. I'm just... I'm tired. I'm tired of free speech abuse. I'm tired of First Amendment, Second Amendment getting fucked up. I really wanna break this shit. I really wanna break this shit. I'm sick and tired of everything. I, I can't take it. I don't know. I just don't self-deport myself, you know, at this point. Um, I don't know. But I hate Trump. I hate Elon. I hate corporate greed. I, I love Coney. Mermaid Parade, look. City. These are loud. These are loud, everybody. People in here, city. And fuck my soul, they're ready also.
The next speaker...
Well, fuck this shit. I was looking for him. I was looking for him.
The next speaker is Aurora North.
I didn't wanna leave this podium. I think I should run raw.
The next speaker is Aurora North.
Who's over? I'm Aurora. Next, next, two minutes. Don't kick me.
Thank you so much.
Don't kick me out. Don't kick me out. Don't kick me out. Don't kick me out. I'm tired.
The next speaker is Aurora North, followed by Jack Sullivan. Is Aurora here? Are you... Is Jack... Is Jack Sullivan here?
Uh, I'm just super cuppy, uh, de-mapping and, uh, you know, putting over what happened. A thing that hasn't been addressed yet that I didn't see mentioned in questioning is how long this will take? Because the proposed de-mapping construction would have to happen before the eleven-year-old, would take a substantial amount of time during which would cut, uh, pretty much all access to the beach, to waterfront, to boardwalk, and to most of the businesses that exist currently in Coney Island, uh, including Dino's Waterpark, including Coney Island. In fact, we have the benefit of being pretty close to the train station at that point, but that construction would likely demolish our building. Uh, beyond that point, I just wanna mention, uh, uh, for those of you aware of the effects that a casino has in a community, uh, currently in New Jersey, in Atlantic City, uh, that accounts for the highest suicide rate in the entire state of New Jersey, eleven-point-three percent for one-hundred thousand people. Coney Island currently has the highest in the borough of Brooklyn. There's a tie directly between the presence of casino and suicide rates. And the beach is right there. Construction of casinos is right by the waterfront, right by that beach right. The desperation is already there. Bringing more desperate in the area will only raise these rates, will only cause harm to communities, only cause harm to outside communities, and may get annihilated at that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ariela Sidney Douglas. Ariela? After that, uh, Robert Mendez. Eric Matheson?
I'm here, I'm here.
After Eric Matheson, it is, uh, Aria Ree Dunn.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert. Um, I'm a Jersey boy, but New York is my second home. Coney Island is a special place, very dear to my heart because I've gone there, I don't know how many summers, to go to the aquarium, and go hang out on the beach, and have Nathan's, and check out the museum, go to Coney Island, USA, and the Mermaid Parade, which I love with every flag of my bean. I love it. I love Coney Island, USA. I love the museum. I love the weirdness. I love my beautiful eyeballs out there. I'm just some weird-ass trust hump over here. What the hell do I know? The only thing that I do know is that billionaires are full of shit. They are full of shit. And I know that Thor Equities is fucking poison in this city. And they're willing to poison the very heart and very soul of Coney Island. Have you ever seen the lives of all of us? That we have more hearts and soul and excitement in our little pinkies than you do in your male on white with the sideboard of Smokey and the Cat water lies? You wanna go, you wanna go to the damn casinos? Go back to Vegas. Go back to Atlantic City. Go screw them up. I've already been around casinos. I know what they're like. They are garbage. They are goddamn garbage. So, all I'd like to say about this one is that I like the beard of Coney Island, I like the beautiful women of heart, I love all of that. That's why I go to Coney for. Get away, get a little bit of nice ocean air, get myself an ancient dog, or go over to Ruby's, or go and hang out and have a beer with, sit, go and tell a beer with John Wick over there at the Coney Island Museum. I love that place, it's weird and colorful and beautiful, and that's what I want, and I want the Mermaid Parade. It's the best part about Coney Island. You know what Thor Equities can give to their plants? They can go, shake up their ass! That's all I gotta say!
The next speaker is Aaron Matheson, followed by Ari Ree Dunn.
Good way out.
Uh, Jean Ross.
Hello, my name is Jean Ross, I live in Prospect Heights, I'm an economist, vice professor. I'm also a seasoned visitor to Coney Island, I've had a lot of stage tickets, I've got back. Proposed demapping is a precondition to building a casino the way it was talked about today. It will inevitably change the character of Coney Island that we know and love. You're gonna hear a lot, you've heard a lot tonight from a lot of people who were paid to make a lot of promises that are never going to be fulfilled. I'm here to tell you to take that with a grain of salt and to look at the research that which I had time to talk about all of that. Here are the facts, how to provide expectations to the search, if you would like it. Casino business model is analytical to a vibrant communities. Casinos depend on keeping their customers inside and gambling, that's how they make their money. Every link to the architecture, to ventilation system, to the addictive nature, slot machines is designed to keep customers inside the casinos, not outside where they patronize local businesses. Casinos make money because rapid death slot machines, which is a source of about seventy-five percent of their revenues, are highly addictive. And that addiction increases the prevalence of problem gaming. It also keeps people from going outside patronizing local businesses. The concessions inside of casinos don't go local businesses, don't go on the pubs, go at any casino, anywhere in the country, national chain franchises, not local businesses. Because of this, one database academic study found no evidence, zero, of casino-related booths in local retail sales linked to casino development, and a slower, not a higher, lower rate of employment growth in economies where casinos have been developed. Spread of the lies tamely, northeast region, saturated market, promises aren't gonna be realized. I encourage you to say no to the proposed demapping. Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Cornegy. Followed by, uh, Andrew Benjamin.
He got booted out of Bed-Stuy. Yeah, what the hell? He is a paid lobbyist speaker.
Thank you so much.
He's a paid lobbyist. He's a paid lobbyist.
How would you explain this to me, Steve?
He's a paid lobbyist.
And you're a paid lobbyist.
Everybody, calm down, let's bring down the heat.
Lobbying committee, they already had an hour.
It is important to hear from both sides.
No, no, he's a lobbyist. This is propaganda. This is propaganda.
To continue to interrupt this hearing, you will be removed. Everyone has a right to have, be heard, if they sign up. I'm sorry, you have to leave. You cannot interrupt these proceedings.
But he's not wrong. Robert Cornegy is a paid lobbyist. From, he has been on media here in New York, for promoting the casino.
What the Borough President said two hours ago. This is the people's house, all of us. This is our building, and with that comes a responsibility to be respectful of each other. What comes with that is this is a process that we need to hear both sides. Whether you like it or not, that is what we are legally responsible for. And if you continue to interrupt this proceeding, you will be removed, because you are preventing us from doing the people's work. Is that clear?
Yes!
I'll be clipped. No more interruptions. Thank you.
Time for paid lobbyists, Robert Cornegy, to speak.
City isn't legal.
Let him speak.
I want to thank the Borough President for giving everybody an opportunity to have a voice in this particular issue. Um, I wanted to talk briefly about the demapping and resiliency along the waterways, and also infrastructure improvements, as well as water and sewer and flooding mitigation, which is part of the project to work with, um, developers and the Army Corps of Engineers, and all of that to improve the quality of life from all of the flooding that happens constantly in Coney Island. So I think it's important to note that this actually will be adding to the resiliency along the waterways, which is important to watch and understand the erosion that's happening along the waterways. I forgot to say, I'm Robert Cornegy, a former council member, former chair of small business, former chair of MWBE, former chair of the Democratic Conference. I, I think that it's incredible that people can just yell out anything on people's hearing. And, uh, I just wanna say, I've been on the ground for two years talking to residents and small businesses in Coney Island. And it was mentioned that people feel bullied. And the fact that the room is not filled with Coney Island residents that support the project is a testament to the fact that a lot of people feel that they are, they're, they're in jeopardy when they come out and speak in positive on the project. And, and as you can see, they're shouted down, they're called horrible human beings, they're called everything, so who wants to do that? Who wants to come out and support a project when they know that they're gonna be degraded? It's really, that's really disgusting. I was called a disgusting human being, but the behavior that we witnessed tonight and over the last few meetings is really a demonstration of what's disgusting. This project seeks to be able to improve the quality of life of individuals through infrastructure, uh, improvement and investment, flood mitigation, mitigation along the waterways. I think it's important to look at that, and I'm sticking to-
Please, hold your comments.
Respectfully, it was a few minutes to have somebody removed while I was waiting, so...
Please, please wrap up your comments. Thank you so much.
He was full-staffed of political politics in Bed-Stuy, by the way. Or some shady real estate deal. We'll talk about that more after the meeting.
Can you state your name?
Ari Bronson Davidson.
Your name wasn't called yet, we'll call you when it's done. Thank you.
Uh, I live in the ladies' endowment, uh, my name is- My name is Alfi DeGermenci, and I'm a social studies teacher at PS 238 in District 21 in Brooklyn. Um, I do not live in the community, I live in Woodside, Queens, but I work in the community. And I was invited by District 21 just to listen to some of your concerns. I don't have an opinion for or against the casino, but I came here as an employee of the City of New York to become informed. Um, I care very much about the people who live in Coney Island, and I truly hope that whatever outcome comes at the end of this conference benefits the people who live there. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Namira Zoltegar, followed by Dominic and Rekia.
Rekia, get it right. I wanna hear the drunk talk.
Hi, everybody, I'm Alra. I grew up in South Brooklyn and now live in Brighton Beach. Um, I'm someone who visited Coney Island as a child, I stand here today, not only as a concerned current resident, but also as someone who's lifelong into the community. As others have mentioned, building the casinos would destroy the culture, the character of Coney Island, but if the developers cared about culture and character, we wouldn't be here today. Um, so for them and the Borough President, I'm gonna focus on the cold hard facts. We're disagreeing a lot on housing, economy, but we can look at other cities across the country that built casinos to see what the impact is going to be. Housing prices will go up. Research in Brooklyn showed that in cities like Detroit, where casinos were introduced in the early 2000s, average housing prices in the neighborhood increased by eighteen percent. That is going to price out working families, it's going to price out our seniors in the community. Brooklyn's already becoming unfortable, it's going to become even more so. Studies have also looked at the ra- the rise of crime associated with casinos. Areas, areas of casinos have often experienced a ten to twenty percent increase in crime rates. Five percent in the first two years after the casino opens. Besides crime, there's also increasing social disorder, especially addiction. In cities like Detroit and Atlantic City, problem gambling rates increased by five to ten percent after the opening of the casinos. Treatment for that will then be paid for by the community. In Atlantic City, the estimated annual cost to the city's social services from gambling addiction was fifteen to twenty million. That cost again is going to be paid by Brooklyn, not the developers. And finally, economy, you see the signs, yes, jobs, economy, yes. Jobs in the short term, yes, but eighty percent of these jobs, low wage, service-oriented, seasonal, and as people mentioned before, they're not guaranteed. Further, the economic benefits ask people who stay, stay within the casino. A study of casinos in Illinois showed that nearly sixty percent of spending by casino visitors went directly into the casino, rather than the small businesses nearby. And in some areas of Las Vegas, local spending actually decreased by thirty percent after the introduction of the casino, because locals in the neighborhood, tourists, decide to spend their money inside the casino instead. So, cold hard facts, let's not talk about, is this, is it gonna happen, it's not gonna happen, if it happens, it'll be dead, and direct negative repercussions for the community.
The next speaker is Dominic and Rekia, followed by-
Former city council member. Dominic Rekia.
Good evening. I'm here today as the former councilman of Coney Island, where, when I was first elected in 2002, made commitment to go revitalize Coney Island. And we did that, we resold it, we brought in new rides, we brought in jobs for the community, we brought in opportunities. Coney Island, USA, got their building because of the rezoning in Coney Island. And many more opportunities. Luna Park Houses got seventy million to renovate Luna Park Housing. There's much more to come, once we build the casino under- It's not only the casino, it's an entertainment complex. There's a whole conference community, there's opportunities for jobs for the community that, over fifty thousand residents who want to work, who need to be trained. We are in talks with Kingsborough and other city universities in training our community for free, and to get them ready to go work in the hotel trades, and to be there. We are gonna give opportunities to residents who live in Coney Island, the first opportunities to apply for the job. Not only, yes, you have to applaud, and you know what? We're gonna make sure that you're properly trained for those jobs, Lucy, okay? So you can live it all you want, but you know what? It's all about jobs, Lucy, for your community. If you care about this community, if you're a people, we want to give jobs to the residents there. I don't hear anybody else talking about jobs for the residents that live on Coney Island. That's what this is all about, opportunities! Opportunities, I think what's going on, what do we love in high schools? When do we work with the schools? Where do these opportunities for these people to work together? And you know what? Lucy, if you did your research a little bit better, it's not a community benefits agreement. It's a trust, and a trust is a legal binding document, which has everything in there, and the community will make the decision, the community, our community, motherfucker. And that's what's going on.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you so much.
The next speaker, the next speaker is Jesse Michael, followed by Edith White.
It's ironic that Thor Equities, currently battling foreclosure lawsuits by investors for defaulting on loans, is hedging a personal bet to save their firm by stealing from the pocketsbooks of New Yorkers. In recessionary times, casinos subtract from the economy, the cost being paid for by draining taxpayers and municipal entities. There are many more coherent and less destructive ways to stimulate state finances than the short-term parlay that will sabotage sustainable generational wealth in the Coney Island district. Official studies by the Rockefeller Institute and other leading think tanks describe long-term harms of casinos, determining that they cause workflow reduction in other local industries, massive traffic, traffic issues that can prove deadly, blocked ambulances by the ocean, and drunk drivers in the Belt Parkway, not to mention thousands of vehicles choking in already congest- on choking on already congested flood zones. Less spending in local restaurants, parks, and businesses, you've heard about that, are associated with increases in bankruptcy, sex trafficking, liver cirrhosis, suicide, and gambling addiction, metastasizing the already growing 2.5 million gambling addicts in the United States as estimated by the National Gambling Association. From whom casinos draw the vast majority of the profits, addicts. Preyed on, addicted senior citizens, pressing buttons and losing their savings, perhaps while they're just being a colostomy vet, which is a common tragic sight in Atlantic City. After construction, the casino will trust skilled workers for table games and management from out of state, not locally. They're not gonna spend money for training, I don't believe that. Permanent jobs are low-paying, only thirty-nine point one percent of casino employees burn or live in rage, this is a fact. I urge you to consider the Faustian nature of this Tammany Hall year over this impact, which will ensure long-term insolvent disappointment in exchange for short-term gains for a single embroiled real estate firm. Not only will this demapping negatively impact the other nearby plant, Coney Island Housing Development Projects, the new project, but will be a stain on the reputation of the city's political leadership and constituents that will remember at the next election, and historians will remember for decades. I urge you to read the research, which I'm gonna email over many, many think tank studies. There's a lot of research that contradicts the rhetoric, the sneaky rhetoric that they are providing. Thank you.
The next speaker is Edith White, followed by Eddie Assa.
Does anyone of you want me to hold it? Is anybody tired? I seen your face, let me do it.
Good evening, thank you so much. Um, my name is Eddie, I'm here speaking ahead of SCA, it's part of the Community Federation, which represents tens of thousands of people in South Brooklyn, um, who would be most affected by this project. Um, I want to talk about three reasons why ninety percent of the people I speak to in my community are opposed to this project. The first one being, it's a casino. Um, think about the effect that it would have on the neighborhood, and specifically you. And how it would affect our communities and the people that would be most at risk of things like, things like addiction, you know, just becoming gambling addicts. I'm concerned about my, my brother, my siblings, my nephews, um, and just the future of all my relatives. Um, I know what gambling is, it's not, I mean, it's just basic common sense. It's not for local, you know, community advantage. Point number two, I think the promises that are being provided by the developer, they're offering constant and continuous promises, but the truth is that short-term benefits that they're having just don't outweigh the long-term, not just risk, but the clear harm that it would do to communities, the long-term consequences. The last point being infrastructure. Um, the infrastructure in South Brooklyn simply just does not have the capability to withstand the traffic that it would bring, and, you know, everything that it would bring if the casino was erected in the area. Our drainage systems can't support it, and traffic just, you know, there's not enough space to support it in general. So I, I think it's very clear that the community that I come from, tens of thousands of people most affected by this, a huge part of the area are clearly opposed to it. Everybody, pretty much everybody I speak to. And, um, I think it's, it's not a question, it shouldn't be a question, so.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Johnny Wynn, followed by Brett Benson.
Hello, everyone, my name is Johnny Wynn. I, uh, moved to Brighton Beach about three years ago. Uh, I come from the Bay Area, uh, which, if you guys don't know about, is a place where a lot of very successful companies moved in. Um, and then, as you, don't know if you know, but, uh, the house, all the housing got priced out because those jobs aren't for you. Um, people who get paid well will move in and take your housing. And then, uh, it's, it's, it's basically, uh, and then the crime rates go up. That happened in the Bay Area as well. Um, but I'm not great at facts, uh, and I'm not great at logic. Um, so, I, uh, wrote- Here you go. So I wrote a poem. Coney by the Sea, a symbol of New York City summer, letting fireworks fly on a fun Friday nights like candy in the sky. Sweet sounds of joy and laughter washes away with the waves, leaving peace and memories in their wake. As seasons change, so does Coney by the Sea. But it's not for sale, especially not to greed, it will not stand for debauchery. More than a beach, it is a place of resiliency, a place of rest. It is our plea, pleasure, and duty to protect Coney by the Sea for the children and the local community. Not to sell their souls for money to increase wealth disparity, deafening cries of bankruptcy, addiction and eviction crowd our streets. Coney by the Sea is a place to feel free, a safe space for the tired and weary, a capitalistic machine to squeeze those struggling to breathe. You can purchase the power, try to steal the land, but you cannot take our Coney. We will save as loud as we can and pray democracies still works. Feel the quietness, see the safety, all the smiling faces of local families. Is this who the casino is looking to serve? If Coney by the Sea is for sale, who is the casino going to hurt? Is that all your neighbors are worth?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Greg Benson, followed by Joseph Watson.
Hey everybody, I'm disappointed that I have to open my remarks like this, because I'm seeing a lot of people I disagree with, white folks being disrespectful to a lot of black folks in here, so I'm like, not that, alright? And next, I wanna talk to the people that I do disagree with, because honestly, I've been hearing what you're saying, and I get it, right? Like, you know, I, I live in South Brooklyn, I was down in Coney Island twice a week this fall and winter. Parts of it aren't doing great, and I totally get it when you're like, you know what, we need jobs, we need infrastructure, we need income, how are mermaids gonna help that? I get that, but I'm telling you, I'm telling you guys, this ain't the way. I don't trust these people, I don't trust them at all. They keep giving us the same old tired line, oh, give us some of your city, give us some of your culture, give us some of your real estate. And you know what, eventually you'll get a little bit back. We deserve better than scraps, guys. We deserve better than handouts from these people. Like, so many other folks have been up here, talked about flaws in the plan that's been laid out, alright? Where are all, where's all the traffic gonna go? How are we actually gonna get the transportation there? Property values, crime. Also, I just gotta say, my absolute favorite part, that they're gonna continue to advocate for a ferry stop there, so thanks for that postcard, right? They're not the people to put our faith in. We need someone like that, and it used to be the government, you know? I, I would love to work with a lot of people in here who I'm seeing holding signs of the opposite of the one that I have, to get leaders elected in this city, and in Brooklyn, and in this country, that are gonna actually stand up for residents, alright? This is a country that used to have governments that actually served the people. Let's make them do it again. Not these people elected leaders, thank you.
The next speaker is Joseph Watson, followed by Kai Holman.
Yes, good evening. Somebody left their glasses here, I don't know if it's yours, sir.
Dominic Rekia, look at it.
Yeah, well, I'm here, I speak as a resident who's a father of a teenage son, and an owner of a mentoring organization called the Mentoring Program, which teaches entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial, and business ownership skills to youth, teens, young adults alike. So, the lens that I look through borders mainly around the growth and development of community people. When I look at the opposition, and it lists addiction, bankruptcy, eviction, traffic jams, et cetera, you know, it kind of boggles my mind, because those are currently the issues that we feel we need investments for. In our community, Coney Island could finally address, the Coney could finally address these issues. Truth is, if those issues were concerned and the opposition passionately opposed, then they've been drastically asleep at the wheel for decades. And it's time for those who are providing a real plan to finally get their turn in back. I love the same thing that most of, everybody in here does, you know, they love the aesthetics of Coney Island, being able to bring family and take pictures of the beach and so forth, right? But there's people that live past the beaches there, black and brown folks, in nicer apartments, struggling families, forgotten youth, and it's more than coming out being nasty and disrespectful when your realities don't mirror the same as the young men and women, and parents and families who could benefit from the jobs that could actually come from the Coney. So instead of just looking for hopeful soundbites, and giving, you know, some traction on something we hear, these employment opportunities themselves can make a world of difference in the lives of many families. And unfortunately, it's a lot of those families that a lot of you don't even consider when you walk past those streets.
Thank you so much.
Because many of us, you say what you hear for the people of Coney Island.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening, and I am for the Coney.
The next speaker is Kai Holman, followed by Victoria Seeler. Hey, uh, the next. The next speaker then is, uh, I'm not totally sure. Eddie White.
I'm Victoria. I lost my best friend to gambling. Everyone who wants a casino, I don't have a best friend anymore, okay? I wonder what you think about that? What do you think about that? The only reason it happened is because they moved, and they were here at Casino, and they got sucked in, and now I don't have a best friend anymore, and it's been years, and I still haven't, no one's replaced them. You're gonna put a little, a literal shadow over what's the utopia of diversity in New York. And like you said, you think the baseball stadium, they promised you something and they broke their promise, this is another broken promise waiting to happen. You're gonna destroy people's lives, but they're addicted to gambling, you're gonna have drunk drivers, you're gonna have just building sandcastles on the beach with drugs stumbling out of the casino, trash of their sandcastles, it's gonna be a shadow over the ocean, is this what you want? Is this what you want? You're gonna ruin it. And what about my best friend, Matt?
Thank you.
The next speaker is Angela Rockley, followed by Ariela Jennings.
Hello everyone, my name is Angela Rockley, thank you. And I want to say a few words about street demand, because I think that's what we're talking today about, street demand. So it's a fancy word for a land grant, we transfer the public land to the hands of developers. All as connected, but anyway, giving away those lands. And we've been told without giving away those streets, we can't have any improvements, we can't have sidewalks being fixed, we can't plant trees, which is not true, we can't. There's a city budget for this, and city budget comes from our taxes, we're already paid for it. If we want trees, we'll ask for trees. If we need trees to be fixed, we will ask for our streets and pavement to be fixed. And we need flood protection, we'll ask our city agency for flood protection. We don't have to rely on developer, any kind, casino, any kind. And Coney Island is not anti-development. We have a lot of new affordable housing building in. We welcome affordable housing, please bring it in. It will be there, and we need people who stand up for Coney Island, who stands for our rights. So please, uh, don't get those Coney Island streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ariela Jennings, followed by John Morgan.
Good evening, my name is Ariela Jennings. Okay, honestly, the land belongs, they're gonna do whatever they're gonna do to the law. So why not, let's get some? Now, I've heard everybody's playing up here tonight about addiction, gambling, drugs, whatever. I don't see anybody holding up signs saying, do not open a key pool because of obesity. Look at me, I give donuts, I give potatoes, who's stopping us? Why? Who's stopping Ryan? Nobody's stopping them. Now you're saying that, okay, the people that live in the projects, unfortunately, some of us blew up in low poverty areas, so unfortunately, it recited, none of us was able to go to Harvard or Yale or whatever. So now you have parents that have children, Coney Island is a long commute from Manhattan or downtown Brooklyn here. Now parents have to travel an hour and a half to work, an hour and a half, that's, they couldn't get a job ten minutes away from home, so they can get home to feed their kids a nutritionist balanced meal, not French, not beans, not hammered, but an honest meal. Then you say the kids are robbed and dropped. Of course they're robbed, nobody's home watching them, nobody could afford childcare. Maybe parents can do their homework for their kids, and they can, you know, take them to church and stuff. You can't do anything if you have no job, we need jobs.
They're not concerned about it.
No, look at that, they shouldn't be concerned, because they're gonna say, my dad, my grand boy robbed you, but you had this. Let us, let these parents have jobs nearby, so they can get home and raise their kids, and then maybe they can get a better education and go to college. Children are raising their kids. If y'all wanna picket, picket, Ryan is picket, my friend is picket, and addiction is a choice.
The next speaker is John Morgan, followed by Teddy Watson.
Excuse me, thank you so much, thank you.
Hi, good evening everyone, my name is John Morgan, I've been a resident in Brooklyn for over twenty years, and I've frequented Coney Island since I was in middle school and into adulthood, and just a couple years ago, got to be a part of their film festival, which is a really huge cultural, communal hub. I think a lot of the concerns of people that are in favor of the casino is the short-sightedness of lucrative jobs being made available, and readily available, but I think a better question should be, isn't there a better deal than a casino proposing for jobs? There are certainly better opportunities that can be dreamed up by a private equity corporation than that. Casinos historically are a formula and business model created by organized criminals. And if you wanna consider the success rates of those business models and where they thrive, they're in the middle of the Ucky Desert. If you guys wanna see the values of your homes depleted and sold out down the road, the longevity of this development only shares with you more destitute. You might have a job tomorrow, but a year from then, you won't have a home, you'll be displaced. There is an inevitability with this model to displace people. Already, your community suffers from a terrible crime rate, and will only get worse as a result of the culture or lack of culture that this promotes. With that said, I think it's important to focus on not just the job climate in your community, but also how this is going to destroy the overall culture of your community. You're already saying, what culture? They're already there on the other side of the roof touting it. There's a sign saying exactly what anti-culture this promotes. I do hope that you guys gather some clarity from this meeting, I really hope so, thank you.
The next speaker, the next speaker is Eddie Watson, followed by Obsidian.
This Coney Island's gonna be speaking.
You not hear me? You hear me?
Yeah.
You hear me? Listen, I've been hearing two things, as people still talk about, okay? I've been hearing people talk about crime, and addiction, and gambling, as if that's not going on right now. And those of you that don't want no casino, every time you walk into that liquor store and you got a lot on ticket, you get a scratch off, that's what you do. You know how many people that come in here, spend two, three, four hundred dollars for five of these tickets, and the reason they doing that is because they don't have any money? That's gambling. On the back of the ticket it says, if you have a problem with gambling, call Gamblers Anonymous. So then what are we talking about here? And then you got people sitting there saying, well, most people come in here, they come in here because they got paid. Maybe you got paid to come here because there's no job, you're Coney Island. And when I look at people, it's so funny, the tension, and there's no decorum. I've been hearing cursing, I've been hearing such, such venom. At one point, I thought I saw a maggot hat on some people. Because this is where they are right now, and to me, to me, that, to me, to me, that is a shame, that is a shame. You've been talking about jobs and building in the community, because I walk, I walk these streets over there in Coney, and it's dark out there, and it's so many scenes, you could look like when you cross the street and you call the cops. So let's not play around, if we can, like I said before, if we're gonna talk here, we're gonna talk, let's have some decorum. I see somebody, they're on their chest up, they're cursing like we're kids in here, we're grown people. And grown people that can't come into a meeting and have a debate, and agree to disagree about what they like and what they don't like. And we, and this is where we at right now, to me, that's a problem. And if you don't see it as a problem, then what else? Because who else is coming to Coney talking about doing anything? Who else is talking about a vision? These same small businesses you talk about, I don't see none of the people in there that look like me. These same small businesses, none of the people look like me when trying to hire somebody that looks like me. And let's stop playing the game, let's tell the truth. Thank you.
The next speaker is Obsidian, followed by Bart Smith.
Please hold your responses so that we can hear everyone. Hello everyone, my name is Obsidian, and I'm a resident in the casino, so please hold your eyes. Thank you. I just want to say that historically and statistically, casinos target communities that they feel are vulnerable, so that they can manipulate them with false promises. And I want everyone to consider that and do their research, because I don't wanna see any of you, I don't wanna see anyone in Coney Island to be screwed over, I don't wanna see anyone that is screwed over here, okay? So please consider historically what has happened to the communities around casinos. Now, during my campaign for Miss Coney Island, I went around the neighborhood and I asked people, what is the first thing to come to mind when I say Coney Island? And their answers were all spoken with eyes full of joy and wonder. They said, family fun, history, sideshow, tradition, mermaids, beach days, sharing classic good times with our children. As a performer here in Coney Island, I have seen families come to the shows for generations. They told us that it makes them feel connected to their parents and their grandparents, that their parents took them here, now they can share the same memories with their own children. How special is that? Now, when I go around and I say, what comes to mind when I say casino? The answers are all spoken with disappointed eyes, they say addiction, gambling, drunk men, exploitation, failure, crime, not something I feel safe having children around. So Coney Island has always been known as the people's playground, not the rich man's playground. So please, help us keep it that way, help us keep it a place that is safe for families. Thank you all so much.
The next speaker is Bart Smith, followed by Joe Myers. And, okay, the next speaker then is Deborah, okay? After Joe Myers, it's Deborah Carter.
If you disrespect me, I will see you outside. Man, old woman, I got a girl for you, women, outside. Look, we trying to get this ticket out.
He's being physical threats against us, that is-
If you disrespect me, I will disrespect you. Alright, listen, listen how we gonna do this, right? Um, this is how we gonna do this, we gonna talk real loud so everybody can hear. People go to work, they pay a hundred and forty dollars for transport to get to work, to get the jobs out of Coney Island, the complex development built, you won't have the pay to go to work, you go walk to work. I know y'all had it, but when we got up this morning, we all thanked God, so thank God you was able to get here, to say what you need to say, and put out what you need to put out. I don't care whether you like the casino, don't care for the casino, 'cause God didn't promise us nothing. When I was born, he didn't put nothing on my toe toeing where I was gonna be, where I was gonna go, how it was gonna happen. He said, live life as single citizens. My mother loved to gamble, my brother back then loved to gamble. If you don't like to gamble, stay in your house, leave us alone, we not bothering nobody. With the lady domes absurd, with the titties, wow, beautiful. Who said that? Who said that? Hoorah! Let's get it, one time for the casino, hoorah! Hoorah! Hold on now! Hoorah! Hoorah!
The next speaker is Deborah Carter, followed by Penny Packer.
And I'd also like to remind each other, our strong, that we're not to enter our testimony and will be no more threats, okay? That is inappropriate and we will be ruled, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Deborah Carter. I lived in Coney Island for sixty-plus years. I've seen great and I have seen disgraced. I have come to the last meetings that you guys are at. I've been threatened by you and your no casinos. I was threatened by one of you to tell me to come outside, that you was going to show me how to, uh, live or what to do, or whatever the case may be. I'm for the casino. There are ten developments in Coney Island. Ten developments in, for Brooklyn's app. And we are representatives for some, a lot of those developments in Coney Island. If they say they want the casino, then as a community representative, we have to work for them. We have to speak for them. And I speak for my development, some, because I have some that live in my development who is against the casino. But what I'm saying is respect belongs to everybody. Whether you like the casino or whether you not like the casino. And what I did not like is the disrespect. And if you're going to bring that disrespect in Coney Island, guess what? We don't need you there. We don't want you there. If you're going to come in our community, where we've lived sixty-plus and more years with the total disrespect. And I'm going to sit in these meetings and I'm not going to argue to disrespect you. Now, you don't want the casino, that's your business. But if somebody else want it, let them. We're not here to tear each other down, we're here to build each other up. And we're going to build Coney Island up because Coney Island is going down.
The next speaker is Katie Packer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Packer and I'm here in favor of the casino. Um, going to speak for the younger generation. I've been at Coney Island for thirty-nine years, born and raised. Um, I lost a lot of friends in Coney Island. Um, I've had friends who were raped on some of these streets, um, that are kind of abandoned on seasons that are not summertime. So many of these streets that they are trying to, um, move around, they're, they're streets that are not really utilized by many people. So we need to look at that, we need to look at our community. Um, the gentleman said a poem, he wrote a poem up here, and the word that stuck out to me was resilient. Coney Island is resilient. We do need to bounce back. Coney Island has been down for quite some time and we need to bring something that's going to bring us up. I work in school, I'm a special education teacher. I worked in 329, I worked at PS90. A lot of our students, I've also worked in Lincoln High School. A lot of our students, these schools, they don't have jobs. They don't have anything to look forward to. Some of them have to find jobs and they don't have money for transportation. So having jobs that are in the community, people that we can actually work with to get those kids those jobs and they don't have to get on transportation, they don't have to worry about trying to get their first check, those are things that we're looking for. We're looking for programs where we can get our students involved in these programs so that these students can be trained to work, where maybe this, the casino is just a second song for them. Maybe they get in the tour, they get a job, they save up some money and they move on. I heard a lot of people say that these, the income that they're going to earn is a low income, but it's some income. We have so many people in Coney Island that do not have anything. So we need to give them something to keep our young boys and girls out of prison. It, it is just out of control, the things that these people go through. Um, but I would say that I do stand for the Coney and thank you, everyone.
Thank you. If there's anybody who didn't get a chance to speak, that would like to speak.
Yeah, that's my number.
Yeah, you can, you can.
Um, the reason my family and many of my Coney Island neighbors.
Can you please speak your name?
Uh, my name is Sturgis McLean and I live, I've been a long-time residence in Coney Island. I've had a business deal, works for various, not for profit. I said I would say I could skateboard for the Better Men's Office as a loan interest to the, the community. Um, the reason why, uh, as I said before, the reason my family and many of my Coney Island neighbors are present at the casino is for all the reasons that you have already heard today and will continue to hear even during this hearing and beyond. Um, and since we're focusing on de-mapping, I, I will just focus in that. Um, to me, de-mapping will continue the, will allow the project developer to create an environment that will significantly increase congestion on the streets all the way to Thirty-seventh Street. This peninsula has two routes for entry and exit beyond the three avenues, Ocean Broadway and Cross Street Avenue. The traffic study that has already presented in the past, that demonstrates that extensive impact, the extensive impact this project will have on the traffic flow, especially during emergency season when time is critical. Navigating through what we have already heard can be time-consuming and make a crucial difference between life and death. Since this project will coincide with other events, that will, that other events, congestion will still be a serious issue, particularly during the summer months, which the developer have no control over the number of people and cars coming into Coney Island. Casinos heavily rely on individuals who gamble with their limited income and hopes of making big money quickly. But in reality, most do not win, as the house always have the advantage. I ask you, are you truly willing to gamble on the future well-being of an entire community for this project? Consider the long-term negative impacts such increased traffic, uh, such as increased traffic, pollution, money laundering, since it has acted. Check, check your, check your, uh, your three words. Oh, I mean, anyway, just summer. Um, basically, I hope that the, uh, borough president will not, will not consider de-mapping project. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ari Brunson, called by Mark Hernan.
Hello, I'm Ari Brunson Davidson. Um, I've worked and volunteered at Coney Island USA over the last decade. Um, I am not for the casino and we can disagree. Um, I don't, in my opinion, being from the South and seeing the same things Prime St. Mississippi and Louisiana, believe them. And you can disagree with me. I don't normally stand up for myself personally in public because it is not safe. But I have seen people yell and scream about being bullied tonight. And I also have gaslighting in the trans world. I have been called a freak from people robbing me tonight. It's not the first time in these meetings. I have seen people mock addiction. You can have your opinion, but if you have not loved, just have one with addiction, it is not a choice. You can have your opinions about casinos and addiction, but I have seen this disrespect coming from people, been threatening me about disrespecting them, which I have not been doing. That said, I am one of a handful of people skilled at what I do in the world, being a circus side show artist. I've performed all over the world. You know who has not hired me in my career? Casinos. Do you know why they're exclusionary? They do not want people like me or anyone else they're making promises to in front of their clientele. They can tell you they do, but I have a career of being denied access in what I do for other people. So what I'm saying is, yes, we need investment. But one of my places, one of my homes, the French Quarter, doesn't need a casino. It has grown from local culture, local education, and vibrancy. And that's what we can do. No one's getting off a plane in Manhattan in January to take a train to go to a casino in Coney Island. It's not going to happen. So one of the few stages on the road that gives me agency and a microphone in my hand as a trans woman is Coney Island USA. My wife and I volunteer, do meditation yoga classes out there. And what I'm going to say to you is yes, because we've reclaimed it in Coney Island. I am a proud freak and I am royalty. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Hernan.
Hi, my name is Mark Hernan, I'm a long-time Brooklyn resident. Uh, I'll speak to the de-mapping. There's no way you guys should be giving away our air rights, our streets. The subject of the casino itself is a different one, but the developer's saying, "Well, if you don't give it this, we're just not going to give you this money." There's nothing binding in these agreements, these promises, and you learn. I don't have to do any of it. Don't be fooled. Hopefully, our, our president will see through this and realize this is not good for Coney Island. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who did not get the chance to speak that would like to speak? Can you please sign in, uh, first?
A lot of the, uh, pro-casino people have left at this point already. Dominic Greggy is still here though.
How y'all doing? My name is David Brown. There's the deal. I know that I have been disrespectful tonight, and here's why. I have been disrespectful tonight because I'm a child of a woman who marched for the civil rights movement in the South. I was taught to speak truth to power. And while speaking truth to power is this, I'm looking over here at a pay, at a bunch of pay lobbyists who don't even let me go. I'm looking over here at a bunch of people who've been duped and hoodwinked and bought off by a developer who looks like a slave owner trading car. And as I've been hearing, all these black and brown people that have been bought off, talking about, "Oh, Coney doesn't, uh, Coney doesn't employ black and brown people, these people, these places that they're talking about don't stay, don't serve us." Keena St. Seer is a woman of color who runs hot takes. The point of the matter is this, a casino will destroy this neighborhood. You talk about, you talk about, "Oh, this at the third street." This young lady who said her friend, her friend was raped on a side street. Imagine the medical attention if something else had happened and she needed medical attention and there was no way to get through because of the damn casino. That being said, no casino in Coney.
Thank you.
I'm not interested. So, so, I'm, I'm, I'm hip to spend. And I, and I travel here, and I, I travel here, and I'm from the Bronx. So, I started coming to the Coney Island since, since ninety-two, when, when I was six years old. I've been, so, I've been traveling, I've been traveling in Coney Island since ninety-two. The trust case, and, and everything since my, uh, ever since my dad, uh, his dad drove us, drove us to Coney Island. Because the, the reason why I come to, come to Coney Island a lot, because of, uh, I have, there's a, I have my family, there's, there's, I have my family that's, that's in Coney Island. We do not want any casino at my family's neighborhood. This is the last time, uh, the, the, I don't want, want to come to, uh, come to, come to the Coney Island, Bronx Bronx to see any casino, period. Because the, because the thing is that, because I travel here, uh, a lot, coming from, coming from Redwood there to Coney Island. Because it's, it's taking two hours, because of all, because it's taking two hours to come to Coney, uh, because it's taking two hours to come to Coney Island from subway? No. So please, we want this Coney Island to be, we build, uh, please, we built this Coney Island, uh, we built it Coney Island with no casino, without any casino, period. So that's why I have to say, I have a lot of, uh, to, to, to go. Thank you guys after the night.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who, is there anyone else who did not get the chance to speak that would like to speak?
There is a job fair Friday, nine-bunch, three work hours.
This hearing has not concluded. Is there anyone else who has not spoken who would like to sign up to speak? Okay, thank you all very much. So hearing no further comment, this item is closed and this Uler Public Hearing is now closed. The Borough President will review this application and submit his recommendation to the City Planning Commission, which will hold its hearing on this item at a later date. As a reminder, members of the public may submit comments to testimony at BrooklynPDP.nyc.gov for the Borough President's consideration until 5:00 PM on Friday, March 14th. This hearing is now adjourned. Thank you all so much.
I'm not going to speak because I am here in a documentary capacity. Alright, so let's, let's see if we can get outside really quick. Most of the supporters of, for the casino have left already. But another big thing is, let's, did they, did anybody else leave their signs? Yeah, good to see. Let's see, let's see if anyone else has left their signs behind. That's what we, that's what I really want to see. At least they took, at least they took all their, oh, there we go, we got a couple of signs back there. We had, we had a couple of their signs. Let's try to slide out here. Here are the signs. Here are the signs right here. They usually just leave their signs behind, they cleaned up this time. Alright. Now. Can I, can I take, oh, this is, this is the stairway down here. This is the elevator down. Look at the beautiful spaces, this is really quick. I'll tell that dude thanks for the shout-out, I will. I wish I could take the stairs now. Alright. Let's go down the stairs here so we can, we can maintain a connection here. The last time I was here, I, I drank, uh, free Heinekens right here. And actually, I think I had that on livestream. But at least, at least they take, they cleaned up their signage. So that's good. But that was crazy. That was a little, that was a little wild in this beautiful historic building. Let's wander out. Okay, we came in this way. Oh, they got those doors closed. Let's go this way over, let's go, let's go this way over right here. Yeah, because the, the saying that Coney has no culture was very insulting.
No?
Oh, man, I found the wrong people.
Are we going that way? I think we're going right, this is how we came in. Okay, we wait for all the people. Oh, yeah. This is the, this is the exit over this way. But you're more than welcome, guys. I mean, I think another, another thing that wasn't really addressed, oh, thank you, Matt.
Sure.
Thank you. I think another thing that wasn't really addressed was the fact of, uh, light and shadow. The fact that, uh, Surf Avenue will be in shadow most of the day. Was that inten, was that intense enough for you? But light and shadow, I mean, to, to have Surf Avenue be in shadow for most of the day and also say that Coney doesn't have culture, it's kind of insulting to the people who live there. To, to ride the Wonder Wheel with a forty-four-story tall building next to it staring at a building, it's not exactly very nice. But. But I hope you guys enjoyed that. That, that was, we're vlogging, man. Yo, they want to build a casino in Coney, what do you guys think about that? Hell, yeah, you want to get a casino built? They want to build a forty-four-story tall building, so, oh, you got to skate away, okay. I mean, you guys wanted to be in the vlog, right?
I want to be in the vlog.
You want to be in, so what do you think about a casino being built in Coney?
Uh, Coney Island?
Yeah.
Is that what they're tearing down the roller coaster for?
No, it's, roller coasters are, are landmarks.
Okay. Wait, so the Cyclones still there?
Cyclones landmarks and the Wonder Wheel.
Forty, forty stories?
Forty-four stories. So if you're riding the Wonder Wheel, normally the view you get towards Manhattan will be blocked by a building. Is that, would that be fun, would that be cool?
That's kind of crazy. I feel like there's a lot of other places to build a casino.
Well, we already have one already, though.
I mean, so why do we need another?
Yeah, why do we need another, right?
I'm, I'm saying no for this.
We, we need a good skate park in Coney. That I will agree with.
We do, oh, my god.
We need a good skate park with nice lighting. You know what I mean, you know what I mean, but.
I feel.
Enjoy the we, enjoy the weather, guys. There you go. See, so there's some random people here on the steps of Brooklyn Borough. I'm not for it. No, obviously, I'm not for it because I don't want to stare at a. I'm not for it. No, obviously, I'm not for it because I don't wanna stare at a building while riding the Wonder Wheel. That's like the main thing. Um, Kita, yes, you did hear my knees crack when I finally got a seat. Um, you know what? I wanna wait for Dominic Recchia. I wanna see Dominic Recchia. So let's see, let's see. Let's see if we can get Dominic Recchia. So most of the casino supporters left way before the meeting even concluded. But I really wanna know the word from Dominic Recchia one more time. Now, Dominic Recchia was a big proponent for the rezoning back in twenty-ten. And all the people who are for the Kony are really, that, that's the guy who did the traffic survey right there. He's the guy who, they're gonna put signage up. They're gonna put signage up. They're gonna put signage up at forty-four intersections. At least they kept, at least they're taking their signs with them, though. By the way, uh, Joe Packard, it's another failed Kony, Kony Island politician. But let's see if we can get Dominic Recchia. A word from Dominic Recchia as everyone comes out. So, yeah, Dominic Recchia is a paid lobbyist for, uh, the development. And he has been for quite some time. Now, obviously, this isn't like my normal, normal fare whenever I do such things like this. Obviously, this is a... Oh, do we have, do we have a, a street debate here? Ooh, if you have a street debate here with Lucy, this is gonna be great. This will make good, this will make good livestream here, so let's see. Let's see.
They're gonna sign off, right? Or you have your, like, first, it's go to the casino. You're the reason we got to move around with them.
All right. Mr. Recchia, I got your words last time, so let's get it again. Any, any, any thoughts now? You gotta go. But what, you don't wanna ride the Wonder Wheel staring at a forty-four-story tall building, right? Okay. I guess he, I guess he wants to watch stare at a building. I wanted to get his fucking words so bad. Okay, oh, this is the guy who threatened violence there. These are all of our friends. These are all of our friends. This is the guy gave out the gift cards right here. This is the gift card guy. This is the gift card guy that's right here. But let's be honest. Who, who wants to stare at a building while riding the Wonder Wheel? Am I right, people? Oh, here, here's our traffic, here's our traffic engineer. Here's our traffic engineer and, uh, he did a fantastic job. All right, we're, we're gonna... I know, I wanna hear the street debate too, but it's kind of, is it winding down? Let's see if it's winding down. He was on Fix Eleven, he was on all the channels.
But you, but now, here's the thing. You need to do this loud. Speak truth to power now. Keep, you wanna keep your business, speak truth to power. Don't stop, don't be in the bill, don't be in the billionaire white man's pocket. Cuz then you are a balt field liquor.
Okay, so, so here you go with this one.
You are a balt field liquor.
I'm being, I'm speaking reality facts to you.
And I am too. You are balt field liquor.
First of all, I'm never nobody's field liquor. I just know, listen what I'm saying.
Speak truth to power, stand against the casino.
Okay, allow me to speak. Because you just made, you just made, you just made a, a bold statement on me. So let me just tell you this here. I know reality. Reality is this. I'm from the hood regardless. I'm from the bottom. So anything I gotta do is work my way up. Stop. Work my way up. I know you're still gonna get fucked over for everything that's going on. They're gonna mold over you regardless of what you say or what it is. All I'm saying to y'all is, speak to them. You already know what's gonna come. They're gonna come regardless, whether it's this company, you said it's eleven other companies, um, um, trying to fit this bid. You know what I mean? But whatever point is...
And one of them's Jay-Z.
Listen, the point is...
He wants to put it here.
One of those companies out of eleven is going to be whatever casino it is, right? One of them, right? At the end of the day, you milk it out the best way. What y'all offering? Let's say they offered in the two, two fifty, right? At that one-time stake. But it's up to us to be able to, um, get the money and divide it up and make some use so that it can build up.
That's a buyout.
But it is a buyout or get kicked out. What more you gonna say? So, I'm not a field nigga at all. I, me personally, I'm the, I'm, I'm the one that Harriet Tubman staffed. Let's get out of here. Let's go. Let's do what we gotta do. Let's kill some of them fucking white masters and, 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 and that's that. That's me. You know what I'm saying? I'm never, no, I'm not...
You say that with the casino, with the, with the white masses papers in your hand. You say that with the white masses papers in your hand.
I just got this paper from y'all. And I got this one here. I just got this one here, what you call it? I just got this here, yes. Cuz I do believe in the jobs. I do believe in jobs.
There are jobs.
There are jobs.
Let's talk about the fundamentals. Let's talk about the fundamentals.
Hey, you will sell your zone for two hundred and fifty dollars. That's what it is.
They won't change, no, no, no. I know for sure.
Oh, my, okay. Okay, we've been going. Holy shit, we've been going for three and a half hours. I don't know what jobs. I don't know what jobs. I don't want, I don't wanna stare at a building. I don't wanna stare at a building. I really, I really wanna talk to the traffic engineer guy, but I know he's not gonna give me a good answer on anything. Ah. So let's be honest. As somebody who has studied the plan, are there gonna be jobs? Yes. But what there is gonna be guaranteed, if they get it built to the way they wanna build it, do you really want Surf Avenue in shadow most of the day? Do you really wanna walk past a casino on your way to the beach from the subway? Do you really wanna stare at a forty-four-story tall building while riding the Wonder Wheel? These are the questions that we have to really ask ourselves. And remember, we learn, oh, right, 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 we learned the number one thing tonight. The number one thing tonight that we learned, people. This is the big one. There is gonna be no amusement on that rooftop plaza they wanna build. Those are just lights. Those are just embellishments. Those are just little fluff on the top of the fucking building. We learned something huge tonight. And that is, there are no rooftop amusements. That little, that little, uh, rendering they showed was complete bullshit. Does anybody remember when they first proposed Atlantic Yards and the Barclays Center? That was supposed to be a park on top of the arena. Who remembers that? I remember that because I did a documentary that you could see here on this YouTube channel. You see a little clip of that. But that was one of the agreements. That they were gonna have a public park on top of the arena. And that was the first thing they got rid of when they had to re, renegotiate the project. So we learned something today. All of those rooftop amusements are not gonna happen. Why can't we build a pavilion, a new pavilion of fun with, with amusements on the rooftop of that building? That's probably a lot shorter. That will complement Dino's Wonder Wheel Park and Luna Park and all the other amusements. Why can't we have a new enhanced, uh, amazing, uh, Eldorado Auto Scooters? Huh? Why can't we have a bowling alley? Why can't we have a small little movie theater? Or my little vision, uh, an envelope of a building to create futuristic twenty-first century dark rides that are curated by artists? And you could have a new rotation, a new, a new attraction in there every, uh, six to eight months? So the rides never get fucking stale? And that could be open year-round. Why hasn't Joe Sit built that in the last fifteen years he has had the property? Why did Joe Sit let the oldest building in Kony Island, the Grass Horn, wither away to dust? These are the questions we have to ask ourselves. This is why I didn't speak. Because I am here in a documentary fashion. I'm here only to, to get what happened in that building tonight. I wasn't here to say my own piece because I have this YouTube channel to say my own piece. All right, so, there you go. But we learned something. That Blight for Spite, Joe Sit and Thor Equities completely lied to us in the renderings. And we're not gonna get rooftop amusements. We're not gonna get them. We're not gonna get them. We're not gonna get them. Uh, Joe Sit is an asshole. Yeah, you wish they would make a decent dark ride? We could do it, BB. We could do it. We could have dark rides in Kony Island. There's enough space in Kony Island to build an amazing dark ride complex that we could change in and out, that it could, it could, uh, uh, evolve with the times. The technology is there and the artists, the creative professionals are here in Brooklyn. It's possible. A better world is possible if we all just get along and do maybe a little bit of homework. Miss Kony Island, you want, you wanna say some words while we finish out here? Because why not? These people hung out with me for the last three hours and three...
Wow, thank you all so much. That was a wild ride.
You guys spoke eloquently.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that, I don't even know what to say.
Yep.
A lot was said. But I think ultimately the fact that people are trying to downplay addiction and say that it's a choice is really tone deaf and insulting.
And no culture too. Yeah. No culture in Kony.
I don't know if the viewers saw the images that were put up, but they were AI slop.
Yes.
AI slop.
Well, we, we learned, so we learned something. There's gonna be no amusements on the rooftop.
No.
Of the building. Those are just lights.
Those are just lights. It's a place, oh, it's a place you could put on concerts. How much is it to book that concert?
Right?
Fair.
Yeah. It's a, it's not, it's, it's all a load of shit.
Yes, and also, like, when they, so there was somebody who called out the mermaid parade as being like, oh, half-naked people around children. There's a beach, so there are half-naked people literally walking around on a rent of Tuesday morning. There are always half-naked people going around the neighborhood because it is a beach. So, the mermaid parade being the nation's largest art parade, the largest art parade in all of America, it brings so much money into the local economy. The, a lot of the local businesses there hire extra staff to help them through that day because of the boom in business. It really helps the community and the neighborhood. So when they're talking about like, what a mermaid it's gonna do for the community, there you go. Um, and it was also a fundraiser for the nonprofit arts organization, Kony Island USA, so, yeah.
Teachers people fire eating?
Teachers people fire.
Side show school people.
Yeah, side show school people.
Helps a lot of artists and it's also a very queer-inclusive space that provides a weekly free drag space for the community. Drag shows, a viewing party every Friday. Um, that's something that's really important, like finding a space in Kony Island that is very welcoming to people of the LGBTQIA+ umbrella is so important and not, there's not a lot of spaces in Kony Island.
One of the only safe spaces to practice fire as well in all of New York.
Yep, the whole city.
Yeah.
So, wow, they loved, they loved you, Jake. They loved you, they loved y'all.
Thank you for helping.
I have to. So, we, we, we'll end this now because I think that was a nice way to put it with two beautiful people here. This is amazing, the community, but from, from Jake and Obsidian, I'm sorry, Ms. Kony Island, Ms. Kony Island twenty-twenty-five. This is Dutch Ma's signing off. Have a magni, magnificent Brooklyn day, whether you can afford to live here or not. Hug your loved ones, cherish those beautiful moments.
Take care of each other.
Good night, Mrs. Calabash.
Be well, be well.
Good night, Mrs. Calabash, where are you? Bye, guys. See y'all the next one. Yay.